... meeting of the City of Southfield being held on Monday, June 27th at 6:00 PM. I will now call this meeting to order. Would, um, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Present.
Brightwell.
Yeah.
Cruz.
Present.
Frazier. Hoskins. Mandelbaum. Taylor.
Here.
Madam President, you do have a call. We'll excuse Councilman Frazier, Hoskins, and President Protem Mandelbaum.
Thank you.
Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Everyone, could we please have a moment of silence for the light in memory of Lieutenant Colonel Alexander Jefferson? Mr. Jefferson was one of the Tuskegee Airmen. He was 100 years old, and he passed away. And, uh, we will have his funeral on July the 8th. And I just would like for us to remember him for all that he's done for us to be here tonight. One moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
If I could just say, Rutherford Jefferson was alumnus of my alma mater, Clark Atlanta University, and, uh, he always took time out to come and speak to every young group that was going to Clark, including myself, uh, for many years, and was a great man. And, uh, so I appreciate you taking the time this evening to acknowledge him.
Thank you. He was a great man.
Next, we have Communications. The City of Southfield has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language toward any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting or impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Thank you. First, we have Mr. Greg Keeler. I don't see. Okay. Next, we have Mr. Warren Hudson.
Warren Hudson with Friedman Management Company. Um, our comment is related to Item B on your public hearings of site plans. It would be more appropriate for us to come back after you've heard that. Uh, I'm happy to do so.
Uh, no, we only have, uh...
Okay. I'm gonna turn it over then to our counsel attorney, Weisberg.
Good evening, everyone. Nice day to be out and nice weather.
Could you speak into the mic?
Sorry. Nice day to be out in Southfield.
Thank you.
Beautiful weather out there today. My name is Robert Weisberg. I'm here on behalf of the owner of the Galleria Office Complex. Uh, as I believe the council knows, today is the date for consideration of a site plan in connection with certain property which abuts the Galleria property, which was formerly the Star Theater property. There has been certain materials that have been previously submitted to council by Galleria. I would like you to take those into consideration, but I would like to emphasize a couple of points with respect to those materials. The requested site plan involves a, uh, conversion of the existing building into a religious facility which will result in, as con- as contained in the site plan, the need for 1,095 approximately parking spaces. We do not believe that the applicant satisfies the existing zoning for those 1,095 spots. And the, and the reason is, is because, uh, in the site plan, as you might note, there is a bifurcation of the uses of the property, such that there is a number for weekends and there's a number for weekdays. Our position is the zoning code or zoning ordinance, excuse me, does not provide for that bifurcation. You're one thing or another thing, but you're that thing 24/7/365. If they need 1,095 spaces during the weekend, then they need 1,095 spaces during the week as well. They don't have 1,095 spaces, and there's really two primary reasons which Galleria is taking as to why they do not. The first is, is that under various agreements which encumber the, the underlying real estate property, most of those spaces are shared, so the owner of the Star Theater property will not have 100% use of those spaces. And of those spaces that are shared, approximately 550 of them can be designated as exclusive for the use of the Galleria, and therefore, they further will not have use, and those spaces will be further restricted by that second provision. Accordingly, there's no way they can comply with 1,095 spaces at all times, during all days, during all hours, during all, all years. So for that reason, the 1,095 spaces is not complied with.
Mr. Hudson, we have a three-minute limit for this, under this section.
Madam President?
I don't, I don't know how much longer.
If, if I could, I, I think he has, I would say he has 30 more seconds just because of how it began.
I think Mr. Hudson may have taken a few of my seconds.
Okay. But just so you know, and I was just wanting to know, how, how much longer you want to do your, not that, we want to hear what you have to say.
I mean, I have another minute or so. That's all.
Okay.
All right. So, so, one, they don't have the 1,095 spaces a- as I indicated. Secondly, the way this is set up, the, the proposed use is not a true secondary use to the primary use of the complex, which is the Galleria's office operations. The, the church operation, should they be approved, would be a standalone. They have no relationship to the underlying complex. They don't serve the underlying complex in any way. And under, um, Section 5.141, Parent 2 and Parent, they must be designed, as a separate standalone building, it must be designed and oriented to serve more than one building in the complex. Well, in this case, unlike the theater, which had specific obligations to the Galleria, the church would not have any obligations to the Galleria, and accordingly, they're not designed and oriented to serve any of the buildings in the complex, which includes the Galleria buildings. So for that reason, it's not a secondary use. Mr. Crowde had indicated in his proposal, or his recommendation, that it was a secondary use, and that might give the church some further excuse not to comply with zoning. We don't believe it is an appropriate secondary use under those circumstances.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Brightwell.
I, I would like, uh, you know, once we get to, to end of this section where everyone has spoken, uh, I would only want to hear from our planner about this, because this is, I think this is a critical, uh, uh, nature with, with respect to that site.
Right. We'll be hearing from them under the site plan.
Okay.
This is, this is a topic that will be covered under the site plan, but, but as you know, site plan does not include public comment.
Okay.
So that's why...
Okay. I, I just want to make sure I heard from Mr. Crowde on this tonight.
Yes.
Okay. It will be spoken to. Okay.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
And we heard from Mr. Weisberg. Next, we hear from, uh, Mr. Joe Person.
Mayor. City Clerk. First of all, I think it's awesome that everybody stands up and says they pledge allegiance to the flag, which brings me to where I'm at, and I was... Democracy is something that many of you, while we talk the talk, we don't walk the walk. I'm one of the few people in the room, such as the Lieutenant Colonel that you spoke of, uh, that we didn't really did the talk, and we walked the walk, you know, uh, for everybody to have this democracy. And as a retired, uh, military person, I, I listen to democracy, and I say to myself, "Okay, we really need to be serious." And after what happened last week, you know, I, I go all the way back to when George Floyd was killed, nobody came out, nobody's pushing democracy, and now all of a sudden, democracy is serious. Everybody is saying, "We need to do something." Well, I'm the chair of the Southfield Lathrow Village Democratic Club, and we're having politics in the park. And for individuals that sit on this city council, as well as other individuals who are representing Southfield and Lathrow Village, this is an event that you need to be at, because there will be no, because I know your name, you did something, you said something, I know you, you're my good friend. We're choosing to get behind the people that are gonna represent us, because we can't send a person to whether it's the state legislature, whether it's the county commission, whether it's the U.S. Congress, that's not qualified to represent us, because Republicans and some Democrats are not playing. Some of the Democrats, like I say, uh, Joe Manchin and the young, the lady from Arizona, uh, Messina, they don't represent us. So at this event, at the Politics in the Park Saturday, July 9th, 2022, at Pebble Creek Park, the address is 26300 American Drive, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. I would suggest that everybody come out that's serious about democracy, 'cause this election for the 12th District, for all of these individuals, is not gonna be business as usual. You're gonna have to come out and work and ask us for your vote. And the question, the one question our club is gonna ask you, "Why should I vote for you? Give me a reason to take out the other person versus the person that wants to run against that person." We're, we're in a, we got some serious problems, and we need to address them. So please, come out to the Politics in the Park Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 PM at 26300 American Drive and listen to the candidates. Y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Person, what was the date again?
Uh, July, July 9th.
Thank you.
1:00 to 4:00 PM.
Thank you. That will conclude our communications for this evening.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, excuse me. Uh, since we have a, a decent-sized audience here, and we, we mentioned, uh, Alexander, Colonel Alexander several times, I wanna just let, when I was the Chair of the Veterans Commission here in Southfield, uh, I had the opportunity to meet Lieutenant Colonel Alexander several times, and we had a project going with the Library of Congress, the Library of Congress, and we had approximately, we did, I did approximately 200 interviews with veterans, wartime veterans, and Colonel Alexander Jefferson, he, he, I interviewed him, and his life story is at the Library of Congress that was recorded here in Southfield, and it talked about when he became a prisoner of war, from day one, and everything he did to, to become a, um, a Tuskegee Airman. So if you go to the Library of Congress site, that's www.loc.gov, and look up Alexander Jefferson.
Jefferson.
I'm sorry. But I'm having a brain freeze here. You will see his life story. It's about an hour interview, and he talks about everything from the day one he was there. He gave a very humorous story, but it was, it was life-threatening, when he was in POW camp, and, uh, and quite frankly, there was some stuff there that, how prisoners actually strategized getting out of the POW camp. So, and it's, it's very enlightening. So if you are interested in a true life story from World War II in, in the Tuskegee Airmen, you can check it out on, on the Library of Congress site. That's loc.gov, and you can search for his name, and you can search for Southfield. Really, we, we did about 300 of those interviews here from, from Southfield, and I personally did approximately 200 of them. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me a bit there, but I, I, uh, he, uh, the Colonel was a very dynamic person. Even at, at his elderly, elderly, elderly age, you can understand why he was a, a spitfire when he was a young man. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our presentation of the Southfield pool.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I was asked to give an update of the pool.
Yes.
Um, as you remember, in April, we asked your permission to approach neighboring communities regarding pool usage. Uh, later that month, our city and the City of Oak Park prepared an interdepartmental agreement that was reviewed by our city attorney. Due to a shortage of lifeguard staff and recruitment being as difficult as it's been for Oak Park, they delayed their opening until this last Thursday, June 25th. The City of Oak Park will be bringing that agreement to their council next Tuesday, July 5th. As a reminder, the agree, on what the agreement provides for our residents, our residents will receive a resident rate for open swim, a resident rate for men's and women's swim, a resident rate for aquatic exercise classes, and then we will have resident-only swims on opposite Saturdays and Sundays through the rest of July and August. Our first one being this Saturday. It's from 6:30 to 8:30. The Finance Committee and Administration are preparing, uh, to tour pools. We're scheduling that for July 5th. We've got confirmation from two pools. We're visiting Romulus, Canton, Farmington Hills, and Livonia. We will be confirming those times for council. We are going to be providing a smart bus, uh, so that we can all meet here if you would like, rather than to take separate cars. I have been working with our Finance Director, Austin Michaels, regarding gathering operational costs for existing facilities, um, and we are developing the scope for acquiring, uh, a consultant for that study. Going forward, our challenge is going to be financing the pool construction. We could have a project anywhere from $9 million to $30 million. We haven't looked at costs yet, uh, but they could be very steep. We will be analyzing operational costs, including the maintenance. But even more so, um, or as important, is assessing what the revenue stream will need to be, uh, in order to keep this sustainable, uh, to assure sustainability. In the meantime, our customer service staff are doing an excellent job assisting our residents with swimming alternatives, providing locations. I sent you all an email this last, uh, last week. We're providing directions and fees and times and making it easy for our folks to, to participate in some nearby aquatics facilities. But as we go forward, we're looking forward to a, uh, an approval on next Tuesday night. We will then be promoting to all our residents, uh, that, that swim, uh, is available in Oak Park, um, and then we'll be going forward, um, with the tours and, and looking at our options and opportunities, uh, for a pool development, um, over at the sports arena. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, do we have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you, Ms. Fields.
Uh-huh.
Is there a way that we can put this information on the website?
There is.
I'm looking at the website now. It just says, "We're working on a deal with Oak Park," but the information you sent to us also listed several other free opportunities.
We are, you're absolutely right. We are going to put the other alternatives on the website. We are not able to promote the Oak Park details until their approval, um, on Tuesday. But, um, yeah, Stephanie is, our marketing person, is putting all that information for alternatives for those pools. I believe I put some splash pads. There were some free splash pads at Heritage Park in Farmington, and Normandy Oaks and Royal Oak, but yes, we'll, we'll get that information up.
And besides for Oak Park, we, we originally discussed back in April, um, working out a, a deal with the Caustic Center at Farmington Hills?
Actually, what we said was we'd be approaching those neighboring communities.
Did, did anything happen with that?
Uh, we did approach them. They're comfortable with our folks swimming there at the non-resident cost. Um, I know that they have some memberships available there, so, uh, for us, um, the more cleaner succinct was to go with Oak Park. Our folks can still swim over at Farmington, but at the non-resident rate.
Okay.
Yeah, but we did approach them at the same time as Oak Park. Yeah.
And then, do you have a timeline for when you plan to come back to council for the full pool?
Well, hopefully, we get all kinds of, of information when we put those bids out in about a week and a half, um, but I would imagine that we would come back by the end of July 1st of August with the, with the information.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, what is the, um, non-resident rate for the Caustic Center?
Oh, I don't, I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay. So since that is available, can we also put that on the website?
Sure.
I think, um, our residents, you know...
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
'Cause... Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I, I just want to mention that the Finance Committee is definitely, uh, bird dogging the, the, um, development of a pool, and we see the pool as being a very central, uh, component for our citizens here in the City of Southfield. And so, uh, I know Mrs. Fields, I've chatted with, I've talked to Mr. the City Administrator, so we will be, um, obviously, just parallel and walking the same, down, down the same path with respect to getting the financing and looking at the, um, uh, different designs and, or what is appropriate for the City of Southfield and our residents from a pool standpoint.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Well, sorry, when I put in, but I think I'm saying the same thing that, uh, Councilman Brightwell said. I just, I just want to commend you on, uh, your ability to work with these other municipalities and trying to, uh, still provide good services for our residents. So, um, you know, thank you for doing what you're doing. It, you know, it's not an easy task. I understand that, 'cause everybody has kind of territorial types of things going on.
Absolutely.
But, uh, but it takes certain people to come together to make things happen, and, uh, we're glad that you have, we have you, uh, representing us, so thanks again.
Thank you, and you're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Council, next, we are under the site plan area, and I would just like to propose a slight change. If we could move Item B up to, I'm sorry, Item C to B and B to C. A, B, and C. [laughing].
Thank you, Madam.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our, our first item under site plans is a propos- proposed postponement of PZRODD 22-0001, Middle Point ODD Amendment, petitioner's request to postpone until a date certain of July 25th, 2022. The petitioner is here, in case there is any questions, but we concur with that recommendation.
Council?
No problem with me.
Do I have a motion?
I, I move to postpone the, uh, discussion until the date stated by the planner.
Date certain of July 25th, 2022.
July 25th.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the postponement of PZROD, I'm sorry, PZRODD 22-0001 for Middle Point ODD Amendment, requested to be postponed until July 25th of 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item will be the review of the request of Loom Cannabis Company.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the next item is the Site Plan Review Request of Loom Cannabis to amend the elevations in site plan. The property is located at 26760 Loser Road, on the east side of Loser, between M10 Lodge Freeway and I-696 Freeway. As you recall, they were here for a previous discussion session. There were some modifications made to the exterior of the building for security reasons, as well as aesthetics. Again, the site, uh, is shown here above. Currently Zone B3. It is a permitted special land use. Existing conditions are shown here on the screen. Again, there were some minor revisions done to the parking, uh, exterior sidewalk, accommodating a, a new location of a door, removal of, uh, windows for security issues, and an upgrade in the cantilevered parking structure. With that, um, ask the, uh, candidate, the petitioner to come up and answer any questions, but we are in favor of the proposed amendments.
Madam President, council members?
Good evening.
Any questions? Happy to answer them. Matt Burberry, Construction Manager with Loom Cannabis.
Madam President?
Yes.
Good. Uh, I think we discussed this in, uh, great detail on last week, so I'd like to go ahead and move that we just, uh, that we approve the changes as suggested by the petitioner and the, and the, and supported by the planner.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of the site plan request from Loom Cannabis Company as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right.
Next, we have the Site Plan Review and Request of Halo Architects.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, uh, tonight, for your consideration of site plan approval, the petitioner, Halo Architects, uh, the site is located at 25333 West 12 Mile Road. Existing zoning is regional center. A Site Plan Review Request for the conversion of the previous Star Theater to a religious institution, Fort Triumph Church. In accordance with Article 15, Section 5.139, Subsection 2B, religious institutions are determined as a secondary primary use, along with theaters, assembly halls, concert halls, and similar places of assembly, as well as certain retail businesses, stores, and restaurants. Uh, this is the, um, an area of, of the subject property. Above is existing facade of the former, um, Star Theater with the proposed elevations for the new church. Again, the zoning and, uh, future land use are consistent, and, uh, this is a site plan. I'm gonna ask the, um, petitioner to come up and walk, uh, the council and the audience through these, these next few slides, please, and they happen to make some closing comments.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
City council members, sorry.
Appreciate the elevation.
We want to thank you again for, uh, letting us talk about the project. We left last meeting with some questions that you had, so we've come prepared to answer those questions. Ms. Robyn Kinlock is in the audience tonight, uh, the pastor's wife, as well as Scott Knapp, um, with, uh, Dickinson Wright, uh, which was the, uh, firm that drew up some of the original agreements for parking. So if we need to answer questions on that, uh, we can be prepared to do that as well. I'll let him come up and speak in that regard. Some of the questions that you asked last time, um, the easy one, you asked about the Millennium Theater, Millennium Center. Question was, what were they going to do with it after purchasing this building? The current plan is to keep that as a ministry location with Triumph Church. And so, again, Ms., uh, Ms. Kinlock can answer more questions of that if you do have those. The other two questions, uh, were associated with the Compassion Center, which is a portion of this floor plan. Currently designated, the way we have it drawn and the way you have reviewed it, uh, it shows, uh, several office spaces, um, as well as a clothing area, I'm sorry, a clothing store and a grocery store. So the question was, what were these office areas? So we met with the church just to further designate exactly what specific things this might be. The thing that we want to make sure that everybody understands is, this is almost 200,000 square feet of space, so, so naturally, there are going to be ideas of what we could put in that space and designate it as a service area, but none of this stuff is truly defined at this point in time. But things that had been talked about, of course, were counseling center, tutoring center, employment office and training centers, um, financial assistance areas, and there were more and more. Everything that you would typically see or hear that a church is offering as a service to the community, and where those needs are, I'm sorry, where those, uh, needs are met. On the same... On the same regard, there was questions about the grocery store and the clothing store and whether or not that was for profit. There was even a question about what were the names of that. Again, at this point in time, some of these questions can't be answered to a level that, that we know exactly what a name of the, of a facility is going to be. And then as for the profit, whether or not it's a for-profit center, they don't know right now. You know, they've looked at several things, but of course, as they go forward with this, there's other opportunities that are presenting themselves. So, again, we will let Ms. Kinlock answer some questions if you still have questions associated with that, but it's just really hard to answer those questions right now. If you remember in our last meeting, we said that a portion of this square footage, this is not a one-phase construction project. There's going to be a significant amount of construction in the Compassion Center that will fall for years later in other construction projects. And as needs present themselves in the community, that will have an impact on what the church will build in this area when it comes to office space for counseling, tutoring, and other services that can be provided as a ministry from any church, let alone Triumph Church. Something that the church does want to make sure everybody understands is, they're very well, they're familiar with the zoning process and what, what is required of them. Whenever it comes time to define what those specific areas truly are, then they will make sure that they're going through the due diligence in the process. The city is requiring for that to be permitted and zoned correctly and so forth. So they just wanted to make sure that everybody understood, if there are fears as to what the church is doing with these spaces or on their property, that they understand what the laws are, and they understand what the process is for meeting code and meeting the ordinance, zoning ordinance and so forth. And they would, of course, present that in the due process that, that we would typically use to get something passed. With that, I'm going to open it up to questions. If you've got further questions on anything that we presented in the last meeting or what I just mentioned in this short segment.
Okay. Counsel? Councilman Mandelbaum?
And maybe the planner can help answer this question as well, but two weeks ago, I was at the condominiums across the street. And they had a concern as it relates to the driveway exiting this, this property, which is directly adjacent to their, to their driveway to enter and exit. They were concerned about traffic exiting the theater, church, whatever, whatever we want to call it at this point, where people would be making a left-hand turn out of the main entrance onto 12 Mile and then the, those residents having trouble exiting their parking lot. And when I drove by, I did notice that the driveway was slightly slanted towards making people take that right-hand turn. I didn't know if there was any plan to perhaps make it more, push people more towards the right-handed turn. Right now, there, the driveway does not exactly, while it has a slight curve, but you could still get around it. I didn't know if there was a plan to make it so people cannot turn left or if, if not, if there's a way that we can add that in to help those residents get out of their complex.
Was this mainly a concern on Sundays?
Yes. Because they said they had the same issue when the Star Theater was active. And they were told it wouldn't be a problem, but they said it, it was a problem for them.
Okay, well, to answer your question, the traffic study will support a basis saying that we're going to have a minimal impact on traffic on the surrounding streets. That being said, in another presentation, I also said that churches of this size, when they're conducting a large church service on Sundays, there are mechanisms that churches use in order to control traffic. And again, they want to be a good neighbor. I would imagine they would go through the process of seeing this. If they see that there is a problem that is had associated with the neighboring streets, they will set in place mechanisms to keep that from happening. Again, this site provides eight points of exiting this parking lot, which is almost unheard of in a church of this size, or actually even a lot of facilities this size, let alone a church. So there's a lot of ways that the church is going to be able to set up mechanisms for getting people on and off their property in a way that's going to spread it out.
Okay. That, that helps. The other, the other question, I'm sure that although, all of us on the council did receive some clarifications from the city attorney about this, the parking issues that was raised by the Galleria. Could, could I ask the city attorney to, to speak to those?
Sure.
Good evening, counsel. So I have had the opportunity, obviously, to speak with Planner Crowe. I have spoken with Galleria. We've had a meeting and they have explained it to us, similar to what you probably received in your letter. The concern that we had at the time was that the church coming in now instead of a theater, per ordinance, is treated as a secondary use. And then there are other cases where you will see the courts treating theaters as places of assembly, including a religious institution. So the recommendation that we had always had is that because there were all these prior agreements, when a theater was placed during, that was the use, and this was agreement between the property owners, we were hoping that they could sit down and once again discuss this because per our ordinance, the two things that we have is that we have the religious institution as a secondary use. It is similar to the theater being a place of assembly. And now, if you hear them say, well, now the use has changed, that's concerning to us because church is the place of assembly. And we really wanted the parties to sit down and discuss the agreements. I've, I've read over them, there, there's lots of pages and different things that took place within those agreements. And just as they did with the theater, we were hoping that they would sit and discuss, you know, because there's the interpretation, like I heard this evening from the Galleria's attorney. He said they can't bifurcate the parking. But then, we've also discussed, Planner Crowe and I, and agree that the church is a secondary use and under our ordinance, secondary uses don't have parking requirements. So then that brings us right back to, well, we have, you know, these reciprocal agreements. And those are between the property owners. Can you sit down and talk and discuss this? Because, you know, the church has one interpretation and Galleria has another interpretation, not saying that they're wrong, but these are agreements that were between these private parties. And at the time that it was, the development took place, I guess, 1978, 1979, we, the city said, any easements, such as they did, be filed with the Register of Deeds. And that's the concern that we have even now is that, has there been any discussion? Because we have this religious institution that is an assembly. We can't look at and say, well, we're going to treat the church differently. We had a 6,000-seat theater. You've heard the discussion from the church in the past, and there are representatives here. So we're in the middle. And we wanted the parties to sit down and discuss these private agreements that were originated when the theater was developed. And so that is what we're hoping for. Although, again, you know, each side has their different interpretation. What we as a city have is a secondary use. Of course, they've held that theaters, religious institutions are places of assembly, and we have that in our zoning ordinance. So that is what we would like because what we're looking at is our ordinance, not requiring parking for the secondary use.
So the question I would have is, with, with the parking requirements, we're considering this an assembly, not necessarily a church?
Correct. Yes, churches, theaters.
Well, because I thought that, that, and the planner can correct me, I thought that we had a certain amount of parking per queue seats as part of our zoning requirement?
If I could, I'd like to provide some background from the original decision, which I think will bring light, and it's really the same arguments that we're bringing up today were reviewed back in 1995. If I may be permitted to highlight some of the discussion that took place at council when they originally approved the Star Theater for going into this use.
Okay.
And I'm going to highlight, again, back in 1995, GP 987 and Site Plan 99D, where special use and site plan review request for Star Theater. At, at the time, theaters and restaurants were permitted as secondary uses, but they also required special land use approval. And remember, the conditions of special land use run with the land. So anything that was approved back then is really still in place. There was, the petitioner wishes to amend the approved master plan by eliminating the additional office development in exchange for an increase in the permitted secondary uses. The ordinance provides for compatible arrangement of varied land uses to the surrounding area. They took close review of pedestrian vehicular circulation, sidewalks, parkings, driveways. They had discussions with residents and business owners. Primary concern, again, was existing congestion, traffic, anticipated change in traffic due to patterns of the theater, retail, and restaurants. The theater at the time proposed a development that would create a facility with a maximum seating of 6,000 patrons plus accessory retail and restaurants. And it was argued that the office center and the theater complex could easily share the parking facilities due to the differences in hours of operation. Again, there's more discussion about ancillary retail and restaurant would total about 50,000 square feet. There was currently 4,657 parking spaces provided on the 71-plus acre campus with an additional 668 spaces land banked. The new development would create an additional 1,350 parking spaces for the entire development. And then when they looked at the impact of the entertainment complex, it was determined that it would provide less traffic impact than the additional 760,000 square feet office operating within the peak hours when the major traffic problems occur. Theater and restaurants have traffic patterns that have different peak hours than traditional office uses, which are outside the 8 to 5 Monday through Friday rush hours. All the, so all the similar situations that we're reviewing today existed back then. And they determined that the Star Theater with 6,000 seats had different hours of operation and could be compatible within the entire development, that it was considered a secondary use. And because it was a special land use, the approvals at that time run with the land. The conditions of approval, which, which dealt with the entrance, the egress and ingress and egress, the main boulevard entrance off of 12 Mile, all the various entrances to and from the property, as well as pedestrian traffic were looked at and, and made part of the approval system. And one of the conditions was to, to install a deceleration lane along 12 Mile at the main entrance to provide the boulevard. And the petitioner was to record appropriate reciprocal driveway and parking easements within the adjacent property if necessary. And the conclusion was the proposed use will not adversely affect the surrounding development. So today, we have a religious institution, according to our ordinance, is the same secondary use as a theater or assembly hall, with the same traffic issues, with the same parking that was vetted back in 1995. There are no technically additional parking requirements for secondary uses because in theory, the, the majority of, of those uses of, of patrons are coming from the million-square-foot of office. And we, in light of all those things, we, we feel that the religious institution with some of their ancillary secondary uses is, is permitted by right and that there is not a parking, parking issue. The gentleman mentioned bifurcated use. Well, the bifurcated use was used as an argument back when the theater was first approved, that the theater would be operating on weekday nights and on weekends, similar to what the church is proposing. So, so for those reasons, as well as Ms. King's analysis of, of law regarding, you can't treat religious institutions differently than other places of assembly, we, we feel that they meet the zoning as well as the parking requirements of the city of Southfield. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. For now.
For now. Councilman Cruz?
Well, I'll go back to that one first of all. So, so for right now, if the church decided to have a carnival on the parking lot grounds, they have full autonomy to do that?
With, with regard to carnivals, that would be considered temporary use, and they would have to apply through the building official and the ZBA to get granted a use of, a temporary use outside. So that would be an additional layer of approval that would have to be approved for a limited amount of time, and they'd have to provide parking circulation for that carnival use, similar to other, other entities that have temporary uses of that magnitude. So that's not a carte blanche, open checkbook to do that.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure, I was, as I was listening to you, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I have other questions, Madam President, not to Terry necessarily, but to the group, so should I hold those?
No, give me for the church. They have representatives. Oh, you can ask.
Okay. All right, so just a couple of questions here. I know we talked last week about the profit or nonprofit portion of, I mean, in terms of the building. So, and if I recall, when you were here last time, anything in that building is under the nonprofit umbrella? I mean, was that, was that the case, or did I hear that totally wrong?
I believe that's what your auditor had mentioned, that if there was a for-profit center somewhere in the building, that it would be non-taxable.
So if you open up a, what was there before, Subway or some way, something like that, those would be exempt from taxes?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I'm, I was just stating what your auditor said in the last meeting, so I, I wouldn't be the person to ask.
If, if I could, Councilman Cruz? I have the, I have the email from our city assessor regarding religious exemptions. The exemption is, has to meet a three-prong test. The real estate building must be owned and occupied by the claimant. The claimant must be a nonprofit charitable institution or a church. And the building must be used for purposes which they were incorporated as. So that, that's the first, the, those are the tests that the city assessor will determine whether or not it's taxable or non-taxable. The zoning does allow for retail businesses such as commodities, groceries, drugs, dry goods, clothing, flowers, and notions. The taxable part would be determined on, by the city assessor. In theory, if they don't meet those tests, it, let's say, 10% of, of the floor area is, is a for-profit, that 10% would be taxable.
Okay.
But they have to meet these three stringent tests to be not, considered non-taxable. But as far as use, as far as zoning is, they are permitted uses. The, the taxable level would be determined by the city assessor based on these. And then he goes on and cites further, further requirements.
Okay. So, and I know the assessors, I don't think the assessors here, as you said. So I was just wondering, what tax revenue does this whole development bring to, to the city? Any?
Currently, I wouldn't think any.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said currently, I wouldn't think any. It, it's a nonprofit. It's a church.
It's a church.
That is correct.
Okay. In terms of the office space that was going to be available, I know you mentioned some, you know, community-type things with children and maybe seniors, something like that. Would there be opportunities for, let's say, maybe startup businesses or something like that that can't afford to buy a building or a space right now that they could maybe just start there and fall under maybe that nonprofit, I mean, that nonprofit auspices? And, you know, so they can And, you know, so they can get on their feet and then go from there?
I'm sure that, you know, the church is going to look at any space that they're going to designate as a ministry opportunity. So if it falls in line with their mission statement associated with the church, then I'm sure they would look at it.
So we just call it a ministry?
This is a ministry, yes, sir.
Got you. All right. So how would you see that this development benefits the community as a whole?
Well, churches in general, I mean, they're there to serve. The servant hood of a church is basically the primary, I consider that an anchor to a neighborhood. You know, there was a comment earlier about the theater and the restaurants serving the Galleria. Well, I would also say that this church is going to serve the Galleria just as much. People need church. There's going to be opportunities here during the week that involve counseling services, training, and other things like that. So again, whatever the community needs as a service, the church is going to be there to create the ministry to actually provide that service.
You're real good, man. I like you. I don't know why nobody from Triumph is not standing up here. But I'm gonna go to the last point.
She is here.
I know she's here, but she ain't there. Anthony Adams ain't there. I want to hear from them. The issue that, the last issue that I have is because, you know, part of this is simply, you know, I really had a problem with the J.C. Penney development on Northland, and I feel like that the church didn't act in good faith with the city and having purchased the building and then sold it back to us at a higher price when they hadn't even taken the time to look through it and see if it was even viable. So I'm, I want to make, I just want to make sure that this development is a viable one that can actually follow through and that is going to deliver some, something to our community. It has nothing, I'm not, I have no personal vendetta, vendetta against the church. I mean, I've, I mean, I've been there, I've watched them on TV. It's not a problem. It's just that thing kind of had, that J.C. Penney project just really was just not, to me, was not one that a church, in my mind, would have done. So that is all I have, Madam President.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have any?
I don't have a direct question. I said everything I wanted to say. If they want to have something to say, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
I have a couple of questions. And the traffic is something that I feel needs to really be ironed out. And or, because we will probably be getting, I get calls all the time about everything in Southfield, from trash, traffic, to Wildcats, a little bit of everything. So with respect to, you have peak hours at church. I'm assuming Sunday, 1:00, 11:00, 10:00, those are your peak hours for the week, as for worshippers. And with respect to egress and ingress, I'm assuming 12 Mile would probably be your primary contact point.
I would say not necessarily.
I know, but not necessarily. This is peak hours, and that's a major thoroughfare. Well, anyway, let me, and I brought this up last week. Do we, do you anticipate having to put in a timing light or something to reg, like, with respect to Evergreen and Word of Faith? There was a traffic light put in down there at some point in time. So do we anticipate having something to do with that as for the timing light on any of those major streets, like, well, 12 Mile or any other, the other eight points?
If I could, as I stated, 12 Mile is under the jurisdiction of the Road Commission of Oakland County, and they would be making those adjustments based on the review of the traffic impact statement. But I don't believe the traffic impact statement indicated that any alterations needed to be done. I believe, and I don't want to put words in the mouth, but I believe the impact was less than what it was when it operated as a Star Theater. As far as 12, Telegraph Road, again, that's under the jurisdiction of MDOT. And so they're the governing bodies that determine capacity, traffic signalization, timing, stacking, and level of service. So they would be dictating, should there be a need.
Has the traffic study been done, Terry?
Yes, the traffic, we required, we required that through the planning commission. And there's, there's no.
Is it published? Have we seen it?
Well, we have it available. I don't know if Mr. Spence included it in your packet, but the conclusions were that there was no significant impact based on what's proposed.
Okay, well, can you share that traffic impact study with us? Because that's a driving factor for me. I'm, with respect to your peak hours and getting people getting in and getting out of there during the peak hours. And I just see that as being an issue. Well, phone calls, I will be getting some phone calls, it's just a natural. The other, the next question I have is, will deal with the, what the plans are for the Millennium Building, your current base of operation. What's the general plan for that?
So we plan to continue operating ministry as is, you know, as of today. Madam President, certainly, Councilman Cruz, you know, when you talk about Triumph being in the community, we're not new to Southfield. We've been here since 2010, operating that Millennium Site. When you talk about, oh, I'm sorry, when you talk about impact, you know, when you're servicing the community, you don't always know what the needs are. But we're a very flexible church in that we didn't know that we would be one of the state's primary locations for COVID testing and providing COVID vaccinations. But the governor's office called and asked if we could use our influence in order to service the community. So we've been here, we know whatever permits or whatever requirements that we have to go through in order to service our community and meet the needs, we have no problem doing that, and we've been doing that over, you know, over 10 years. We're very excited about this project, and we want to continue to be good neighbors and work with our current neighbors, our new neighbors. We have thousands of residents who are members of Triumph Church. So it doesn't benefit us either to be adversarial to the community. And so, you know, we're just here to serve, but we are excited about this opportunity. We saw this theater as a retrofit. The hours of operation were very similar to the Star Theater when it was in operation. And so we're looking forward to moving forward in the process if you'll give us that opportunity.
Could you give us your name and head?
I'm sorry, Robin Kinlock, and I'm an executive team member for Triumph Church.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate your statement that you wish to be a good citizen. With respect to the thousands of members that you have, do you indicate you have thousands of members?
Yes.
Now, you would be in agreement to, I guess, let's orchestrate the floor, those people in and out of the church?
Absolutely.
Whatever comes up.
Absolutely. So currently, at our Millennium location, we have three services. So we're not compiling everyone in at the same time. We do have parking attendants who currently work and direct traffic, although it's not necessarily needed. On special events, we have a great relationship with the police chief, and so we've been able to hire some of their manpower in those rare instances where we know that we're going to have. Either we're utilizing the parking lot for a special event and we're shuttling individuals in and out. Again, we don't want to create a cumbersome situation for our neighbors, for the residents, or for the city.
Okay, well, I just know that 12 Mile Telegraph here is a high traffic.
I concur. I used to be a fan of the Star Theater. That was the theater to a ten, so I do know how to get out the back way. But we definitely, you know, again, so just like you're saying, people will complain to you, congregants will complain to us if they can't get out. Because the thing about church is no one wants to spend the majority of their time in the parking lot. So we'll be flexible in that space as well.
Okay. All right, my last question is, I'm the Finance Committee Chairperson, and I've looked at other cities all around the country with respect to, is a program called a pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes. Do would you all be amenable to looking at a package that dealt with a payment in lieu of taxes?
So I would look at anything. I obviously can't commit to something that I'm just being informed of now, but absolutely, if you want to submit it, it's something that we can review.
Okay, well, it's, it's, in my new terms, let's say Boston brings in about $44 million a year from all the institutions in Boston. And initially, when I got on council, I started working up the payment in lieu of taxes for different entities within the city of Southfield. And I do see that I will probably bring that up again with respect to maybe instituting something like that in the city of Southfield, where we have various nonprofit, literally, you know, are making contributions to the city with respect to their use of our facilities, like roads and numerous other things that get impacted by a large number of individuals participating with those nonprofits. So, and I heard your words, you said you would look at it, so.
We will review it, absolutely. I don't have a problem reviewing it, absolutely.
Okay. All right, Madam Chair, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Brightwell, because I was going to bring that up. Large institutions do have a drain on the city as far as roads, public safety, other infrastructure. So I would certainly encourage you to consider some form of pilot agreement with the city of Southfield. Thank you again for bringing that up. Refresh my memory, how large is, how many seats are in the main sanctuary?
I don't know, 1,500. 1,500.
1,500?
Yes.
And you're going to do the same thing that you're doing at the Millennium Center? Staggered services throughout?
That's our intent.
Morning and early afternoon? I know I've been.
Yes, that's our intent.
Okay. And so that certainly will help. And that helps us when people in the surrounding area raise concerns about traffic. You know, I've been at this a long time. You can't do anything, anything, without somebody bringing up traffic. So, you know, it's a fact of concern with every project, no matter how large or how small. It's always raised. So this helps us. I imagine that some of your parishioners would be using Northwestern Highway and the Service Drive to access the church and to leave it, and not necessarily 12 Mile.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. Really, that's all I have. Some of my questions have already been answered through the council. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Going back to the stores, possibly within the campus, you, it was indicated that you don't know if it's going to be for profit yet?
That's accurate.
Okay, so I guess to our planner, the gentleman stated that if we, if they do put something there for profit, they would come back to have permits and to have it zoned correctly?
If I, if I could.
Could you clarify that for me, please?
If I could, the primary religious institution use is permitted secondary use. But retail uses and service establishments, such as clothing, groceries, drugs, dry goods, notions, and flowers, are also permitted by that secondary use. If they change the use to something that's not permitted, then they'd have to go through zoning approval. I believe what would need to be determined is if it's a for-profit versus under the umbrella of the religious institution, the city assessor would then go through those tests and determine whether or not taxes would be paid on that portion of the use that is not part of the not-for-profit.
Thank you. And. It's Kinlock, is that correct, Ms. Kinlock?
Correct.
Okay. Have you or anyone with the Triumph Church sat down and talked to anyone, Mr. Weisberg and his group, regarding this parking situation? Have the two parties come together as suggested by the attorney?
So the neighbors' Galleria reached out to us, I believe it was sometime in January. And on that same day, we made provisions to meet with them that afternoon to have, we just did kind of a Zoom call. So we're not opposed to it. I think, and I don't want to assume, I think that both sides were kind of looking for the city attorney to provide their interpretation because obviously, like she stated earlier, we had one interpretation, they had one interpretation, and so it really became a matter of just getting clarity on what's permitted. But again, I can't stress enough that we want to be good neighbors, and we recognize that the Galleria will be operating during traditional hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. The church is primarily evenings and weekends. But I am not opposed to, and I think we stated that, and we also sent an email to the Galleria after the, was it the planning meeting? That we were open to having any meetings that we needed to.
To our attorney, can you respond to that, please?
So, yes, so that is what Plana Crowe and I have always been discussing, that this was an agreement between two property owners. And the only clarification that we could give, as Plana Crowe gave the history, that it was similar to what happened when the theater was there, that these parties sat down at the table, the city wasn't involved. But technically, if you look at our ordinance, we do not have any parking requirements for secondary uses. So that is where the city stood, and that is why we said, well, you came to an agreement, these parties that we weren't involved with those years ago when the theater was developed. If there is some misinterpretation, then the parties need to sit down because we technically do not have any parking requirements for that secondary use. And these agreements were based on what was done in the past. So that is what I've always said, that is what we said, and we stressed that religious institutions and theaters are assemblies, and that is how we treated, and that is why it came under the secondary use. So the clarification was, sit down at the table. I know they talked about, well, they want to do this on the week and the weekend. Well, as Plana Crowe said, in the past, they sat down. The city did not sit down and say, this is how many parking spaces are for the theater, and this is how many spaces are for the Galleria, and here's these 500 spaces that are on the theater's property, but they are designated for Galleria. These are the things that they sat down together, two separate entities, entities being separate from the city. And so that is why, that is what we've been saying all along. And they said, well, we want you to clarify. And I'm like, well, we weren't part of this agreement. What we have is the primary use, which was the office building. The theater was made to be the secondary use. And now we have Triumph, which is also an assembly, and it is treated such as that secondary use under our ordinance. And quite frankly, the courts, the federal courts recognize theaters, religious institutions, where you have large gatherings that are assemblies. And so that is what we've stressed. I don't know what other opinion I can give because we were not party to those original agreements because those were two entities separate from the city. Had the development, when they had the easements and reciprocal agreements, the city said, please make sure those are recorded. And here we are again in a similar situation.
Which, thank you, because that did provide clarity for us. So, because there was some questions there. So your opinion did provide a lot of clarity. But to answer your question, Councilwoman Banks, we're not opposed to having a meeting with them about anything.
Well, I guess I'm just a little.
Well, I, I guess I'm just a little confused, and if someone could help me to understand, Mr. Weisberg came up, and, um, it sounds like they don't have a problem with the church. It's the parking situation and arrangements, if I'm reading this correctly. And in February, you said you reached out. So, I'm not understanding the communication between both parties. I mean, why haven't you come together prior to this meeting?
So, we've reached out to the gallery, and we've had conversation with them. I'll let Stan chime in on, you know, where we stand now.
Thank you.
So, that was just conversations between the Kinlocks and the neighbor. Brad Rosenberg from Mid-America Group, which is the seller's agent, he's been in numerous contacts with the neighbor. So, I think some of that's not even, has been discussed or has been pointed out, but there have been numerous meetings associated with this.
Stan, could I ask through the chair? I don't know if you have your attorney or somebody that can explain the one hundred and seventy-seven parking spaces versus the five hundred versus weekday use versus weekend. I think that would help provide some clarity. We understand there are some restrictions of usage at certain times. And if you, if you could, you or a representative can explain that to the council, that might be helpful.
Okay. Scott?
Hello, I'm, uh, I'm Scott Knapp. Excuse me, I'm a, I'm an attorney with Dickinson Wright. My partner, Tim Stopker, has been involved with this property since, like, the eighties. And he can't be here tonight, so I'm, I'm sort of pinch hitting for him. You know, we certainly agree that, and, and I respect that, um, council for the city would, would like further discourse between the parties, but, um, you know, we believe that the, the planner has it correct and that this is a secondary use, and there has always been, um, this, the word was bifurcation, but, uh, the use that will be, um, with the church is a, is a weekend and evening use. The office center is a weekday and daytime thing. So, this special use that was approved long ago has always acknowledged that there was this differentiation of basically when the spaces would be used. To the, to the specific question that was raised, under the agreements, uh, there is, when there is a change of use, there was a one hundred and seventy-seven spaces that, um, are sort of deducted from the total.
And if I could, I'm, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are the spaces that were located on the south side of the theater, within the theater's property?
I believe that's accurate.
These are the one hundred and seventy-seven spaces that were...
I believe that's accurate.
...deducted during the weekday.
Correct. So, that still leaves, uh, I know the letter said that, that there was this ten ninety-five required spaces, and, and, and a lawyer for, uh, for the gallery said that we need to have that at all times, but, um, that doesn't make sense. The, the church will not be using that parking lot, uh, during the week and, uh, but only in the evening. And so, uh, there was a data sheet that was attached, I think in your package, but even if, even if the, um, I mean, we believe that there are no parking requirements as a secondary use, but even if the, if the council were to look at that, the church would have available to it eleven hundred and thirty-six spaces on the weekends, which is more than the ten ninety-five that were required. And then during the week, uh, and in the evening, when the required spaces are in the two, three, four hundred, I can give you specific numbers if you want. But during the week, uh, the, the required number of spaces, two fifty-seven, and the available spaces would be five hundred and sixty-two. And in the evening, the required spaces, uh, five hundred and seventy-eight on Tuesday and three hundred and seventy-eight on Thursday, uh, with the eleven hundred and thirty-six being available. So, even if, even if the council were to look at those numbers, and again, we don't know that, we, we don't believe that that's necessary, but even if the council were to look at those numbers, there's sufficient spaces here to be, to fulfill all the needs of the church at the appropriate times.
Does that answer your question?
I, I think so. I still, I just wish that the church and, um, you know, Mr. Weisberg, their groups would have come together. Is Mr. Weisberg still here?
Yeah. And, and again, I, I appreciate that, but, um, as, as council for, as attorney for the city mentioned, in terms of what's required under the ordinance, the church meets those. And, uh, whether, whether the parties could agree on what that language says in those agreements doesn't affect whether the, the applicant has met the requirements of the ordinance for parking.
And, and with that being said, I think we've discussed as far as we can go. I think what we're asking is for the two parties to, outside of this meeting, to do what they need to do, come together, come to some kind of agreement. But for tonight, we're talking about a site plan for the city. All these things, you know, the parking agreement is something that's going to be outside of this. So, I'd like for us to come back, I mean, it's very interesting. We want to be a partner, and we'll help in any way we can. Our attorney was more than happy to, you know, listen or make suggestions where she can. But for tonight, uh, I'd like for us to bring this back to the site plan that we have here. And, uh, I know we had a couple more comments that people wanted to make. If it's, uh, if it's something that's pertinent, I'll be more than happy to listen. But I think we have to keep moving, because we can't make that decision. That's going to be between two independent parties.
I'm fine, Madam President.
Thank you. Council, I mean ours, Madam City Clerk?
Uh, just a question through the chair to Mrs. Kinlock. In the event that, uh, council did approve the site plan, would Triumph Church, uh, be open as a potential, uh, partner with the city for a polling location?
Nice.
I can definitively say yes.
Thank you. That's on the record, okay?
We're all about exercising our right to vote. If that's everything, um, that you have for us, good evening. Thank you for your time.
Well, we're going to read the planner's suggestion, and then we'll vote.
Are there any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Did you have another question?
Just minor, this is minor. I'm assuming there would be no, I'm thinking about light pollution. I assume there's no additional lights being added to that location? Because it currently lit.
Well, I, I just say that any changes on the exterior with regard to building lighting or parking lot lighting has to meet our ordinance, and it has to meet a certain foot candle at the property line. Uh, they have to be shielded and directed downward.
Okay.
So, they have to be in compliance with our noise ordinance, our lighting ordinance, and all our, all our other ordinances.
Okay, so you're telling me there will be no light pollution?
Well...
That's what you're telling me?
We're saying they have to meet our requirements.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I, I don't know if, if council has an appetite for this or not. A suggestion is if we were to, um, perhaps allow, hold off for maybe two weeks on making a decision this evening to allow the church and gallery to talk and come back with some type of compromise. I don't know if there's an appetite from the council, or if that would delay construction costs or your, your plans, but I think that it may, may help. At least, I would feel more comfortable if there was some agreement or something was worked out, um, beforehand.
My name is Brad Rosenberg with Mid-America Real Estate, based in Bloomfield Township, Michigan. I am the representative for the seller. I've been marketing this property for about a year and a half now. We have reached out to Mr. Friedman and his group. We sent them emails and said, if there's something you would like us to do, or the church to do, please offer us a proposal, how we can work together. Mr. Weisberg and his group have not responded to that over the last six weeks. We were happy to get together with them to discuss it, but they have not told us what they want. So, I don't know what else we can do, or the church can do, to help with that problem.
Okay. I just thought I'd throw it out there to the council.
Okay. Are you going to read the, uh...
I can, if you're ready.
Recommendation?
I'll try to, try to read it from here. "We recommend favorable consideration of PSP twenty-one dash zero zero one-three for the following reasons and conditions. Number one, a religious institution is permitted as a primary secondary use within the zoning ordinance. Landscaping must be installed in accordance with approved landscaping plan dated such and such. Any exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage of glare onto adjacent properties. Tree protection fencings shall be installed per the approved landscape plan. All elements of the site plan are to be installed in accordance with the approved site plan. Proposed bike racks shall be securely anchored and supporting surface and shall be at a, at least three feet in height and able to support a locked bike in an upright position. The petitioners to provide a sprinkler system for all landscaping areas to encourage preservation of plant materials. The petitioners to execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas both on-site and in the right-of-way, which includes maintenance of the stormwater detention system. The petitioners to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Approve of the site plan and/or building elevations represent herein do not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage. Separate approval and sign permits must be obtained from the Building Department for any proposed signs. The site shall be designed and developed in accordance with, um, and contain public works of art in accordance with public art requirement, and the building is to be constructed in accordance with the submitted elevation shown on sheets A two hundred dated three twenty-three twenty-two by Halo Architects as amended." Those are our, our conditions of approval.
Thank you, council.
I move approval.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz. Is there a second or support?
I second, second, support.
Supported by Councilman Brightwell for the favorable consideration for the site plan review request of Halo Architects as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. Thank you.
And Madam President, can I just say real quickly that I appreciate the fact that, um, uh, First Lady and head of this team did come forward and represent this project? Um, that's, that's really what I was just trying to get at this evening. So, uh, thank you very much, because it's always great to hear in front of the petitioner, uh, always.
That's why I'm here. Thank you again.
Thank you. Council, next we have, uh, our agenda items for discussion and for action. And item A is the authorization to purchase replacement X-ray machine for weapons screening at the Forty-Sixth District Court.
Good evening, council. My name is Renee Shalit, Court Administrator at the Forty-Sixth District Court, and I also have Shalonda Hamilton, our Deputy Court Administrator. We're before you, uh, for the request, as Madam President just stated, to purchase replacement equipment for the X-ray machine. This is current equipment that's already at the Forty-Sixth District Court. But due to its age, it's probably beyond needing replacement. The machine we have is over twenty years old. It's inconsistent now in detecting items that our weapons screeners should be finding. It's really a critical component of our security station. We are pleased to say that it's, uh, coming in under budget. We did have, um, an amount budgeted for this item. In the last couple of years, we've had it budgeted, and post-pandemic, we're now moving forward. The fi- final price comes in at twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Uh, the vendor is the sole distributor in the state of Michigan for this equipment, and, um, we're requesting approval for that.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions? Okay, seeing none, are we prepared to vote on this?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that, I move that we approve the authorization to purchase replacement X-ray machines for weapons screening at the Forty-Sixth District Court.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz for the approval of the authorization to purchase the replacement X-ray machine for weapons screening at the Forty-Sixth District Court. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
I'm good with the vote, but I know that we, we talked to the council presidents about trying to see if there's, uh, any money back for the old machine?
We did reach out to the vendor. There is no credit, and part of the reason is due to the age of the equipment that we have now. I mean, the parts are pretty much obsolete, um, and so the vendor did indicate that there is no trade-in credit available. And I, I would also like to mention, um, that we're going to move forward with the purchase and also potentially seek, um, reimbursement through a grant, if available, through MMRMA. Some, um, their risk avoidance program, I believe, for, for courts and law enforcement that they may offer.
Okay, thank you.
What about scrap? Can we scrap it? Can we sell the scrap?
Well, disposal of it is a little bit more complicated because of radiation and things like that. It actually needs to, we probably need to make special arrangements to dispose of it.
Okay. Will that be at a special cost?
Um, well, we're working with the city's facilities department to see if, um, they can work with maybe a local, um, junkyard or somebody else who takes dated equipment and can work with it.
I'm thinking of the radiation.
If not, we, I'm sorry?
I'm thinking of the ra- radiation.
Right. Yes, we're, we're looking into the proper disposal of it.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Can the vendor dis- dispose of it? You'll be bringing a new when you take the old one out? Let, because this seem to be kind of complicated with radiation and all that. Just let them get rid of it.
They can. There is an added cost. There was an additional cost of thirteen hundred dollars, which wasn't included in our quote that we received. So, we, we haven't decided yet that that's going to be the best way to dispose of it.
Please keep safety first.
Of course.
Thirteen hundred dollars is not worth someone's life.
Right. It was, it was, the, it's going to take a little while to get this new machine in, so we have a little bit of time to figure out the safest way, the proper way to dispose of it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I echo what the chair said, that, you know, health and safety is primarily what we're concerned with here, and radiation, there's no sense in playing around with it. Just get it out of here and let it, let them take care of it. If thirteen hundred dollars, uh, is probably worth the, uh, the headache, you know, not having a headache or worrying about it.
Yes, we agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, uh, council, we have the authorization to purchase replacement fire hose for the fire department.
Did we approve it? Did we vote on this? Oh, we did? Okay.
Brightwell with the motion.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Madam President and Council. Brought, uh, training officer, Jason Denno, also, in case you have any questions. So, we're seeking authorization, um, to purchase fire hose. NFPA is a national fire standard for fire hose, sets the, the standard at ten years lifecycle for fire hose. We currently have, uh, several hundred feet of hose that have reached its life expectancy. We're looking to purchase one hundred and thirty-five lengths of hose. It's going to be sixty-eight lengths of inch and three-quarter, sixty-four lengths of two-and-a-half inch hose, and three lengths of five-inch hose. The expenditure is a total of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety cents. This is the out of this year's fiscal budget and the fire station's operating supplies and the training division's operating supply, um, budget. We're looking to purchase this through CSI Emergency Apparatus out of Grayland, Michigan. We're looking to purchase this through CSI Emergency Apparatus out of Grayland, Michigan. This is the sole source dealer of this equipment in our region. So, the total price, again, is $37,643.90.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
Chief, I just have an education question that, uh, I don't have a problem. What is, and I, I beat my head against the wall by, with my mathematics. What is 68 length and 64 length? What, what is that?
It's a length of hose. It's, um, they come in different lengths, but, uh, majority, we buy hose in 50-foot lengths of hose.
So, what does 68 mean? When I see 68, what does that mean?
So, we're looking at 68, 68 individual 50-foot lengths of hose. So, 68 pieces of 50-foot hose.
Okay.
68.
How many yards is that?
I'm sorry?
How many yards is that?
Oh, wow, you want me to?
Don't worry about it. Don't worry. I, I, but, but that's, that's a rationale for that, right? I couldn't quite figure it. 68 length, and then you got 75.
Well, 68 pieces. So, 68 pieces of, they're 50-foot lengths long of, of, um, of that one is inch and three-quarters. So, it's almost two inches.
Okay, you, you have 68 50-length segments?
Sections, correct.
Okay, that, that's a whole lot of pole, huh?
No, actually, that is, it's not compared to what we, what we're storing on the truck of that. We, we store quite a bit of, of actually five-inch, we, um, two-and-a-half, and inch-three-quarter line.
Well, so what's the useful life of this brand-new? I know, I knew you indicated that they suggested life is 10 years or something. But what, what is our practice, I mean, what is our, uh, not practice, but what is our equipment? What is our experience with this hose?
It's been 10 years.
10 years?
Some have been a little longer, but yeah, 10 years. And then we'll downgrade it as to training hose. So, we'll, we're actually gonna take a majority of this hose and, and use it for the, the fire academy that's starting in a couple of months at, at the high school. Some that we will donate to OCC's Fire Academy in return for some, um, for some training classes. And some will have to be disposed of.
Okay, all right. Does it matter, Chair? Is this education for, for me?
Anyone else? Okay.
Madam Chair? We're trying to figure out the math.
It's about 312 to 319.
133, uh, yards.
We, we, we have these nerds over here calculating that?
Yeah, we do.
One in yards.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilman Mandelbaum.
I like to move the authorization to purchase replacement fire hose for the fire department.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the authorization to purchase the fire hose and for the fire department as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I just wanna mention, Chief, I have received in the mail a flyer from McComb Fire Department, recruiting people in my household. Just so you know, you got competition.
Oh, I know the competition. I, I do feel like a college recruiter sometimes, but I, I've been going door-to-door, so.
I'm gonna make sure I get that flyer to you so you can see what they're.
I've got it.
Oh, you got it. All right.
They tried recruiting you also?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't get it either.
I didn't get one either.
Yeah.
They said I was too old.
Next, we have the authorization to purchase the Paratec Rescue Equipment for the Fire Department.
So, our department is known around the, around the country, the region, the state, as being leaders in, um, in complex and technical rescue incidences. We have some equipment that has reached its lifecycle. The equipment we're looking to replace is over 20 years old. With this new equipment, we also look at, when we're looking at purchasing this new equipment, we looked at how durable this equipment is, the capabilities, reliability, and the ease of, of setup. We're looking to, um, to purchase a airlifting bag kit, struts which can support a car that's on its side or someone, um, some house, building walls, and also rigging systems, and all the appliances that come along with that. And it also will be, it'll work with our current other Paratec equipment that we, we already own. The expenditures for this is $19,641. Funding for this will come out of this year's budget out of the training division operating supply budget. We're looking to purchase this from Apollo Fire Equipment Company in Romeo, Michigan. The Apollo is the, um, is the only seller of this, um, equipment in the state of Michigan. So, once again, we're looking at to use Apollo Fire to purchase this, uh, the Paratec equipment for $19,641.
Counsel, any questions?
I have one, Madam.
Councilman Brightwell?
This, this is another education question, Chief. You say you are known as the South Heavy Rescue. Does it mean our, our department is known for that? What, what do they mean, in South Michigan, or what, what does that mean?
Yeah, we're in the South Oakland County, um, in, in the South Heavy. Just with the level of technical certifications that our members have, they, they allow, they rely on them quite a bit. So, if any, any type of structure collapse, buil- building collapse, confined space trench, that our department's called to, to provide our expertise. As well as being a, for, for the county team, we are, what's called the South Heavy. There's a south, there's a, um, a central, and there's a, and there's a northern component to that. And, um, just like they, they assembled just recently to go to Gaylord for the, um, the, it was, um, the tornado. With that, and their, their specialized, um, skill sets and equipment that we were able to, to help with that.
Right. So, uh, our people on your team here, they are heavily trained to do this kinda work? And so we, over the years, we've trained them to, uh, become very proficient in what they, in this rescu- rescue stuff?
Yes, sir. Back in, back in the day, you know, it was, it was pretty much Southfield and Pontiac. We came together. Actually, Pontiac was probably, um, uh, the leaders in the area of it, and then trained us with it. And we've been, we've been, um, out on, on these type of calls for over 20 years. We've been doing it. Um, we've been deployed to all over the state, as well as, um, we've had members go outs- outside the state and go down to, to the hurricanes and things like down in Florida and Texas.
Okay, well, it's good to know that our money is well spent on training our people, so. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, counsel.
Chair, I move that we approve, uh, the authorization of the, uh, purchase of the Paratec Rescue Equipment for the Fire Department.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for this honorable body to approve the authorization to purchase the Paratec Rescue Equipment for the Fire Department as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item? Just keep going.
So, this is approval to purchase rescue task force personnel, uh, personal protective equipment for the Fire Department. On recent active assailant-type incidents occur across the country, victims are in need of urgent care and, and treatment of their wounds. South Fire Department's been working hard on industry standards and, and best practices in industries under this discipline. And we need equipment to be able to accomplish the task. The best practices recommends that we should have a Level 3 ballistic vest, a helmet, safety goggles, and a storage bag to, to handle, handle all that equipment. Um, we're looking at purchasing 38 sets of this equipment. Expenditures totaling $47,230.96. And funds for this will be coming out of the fire station's operating supply budget of this year. We're looking to purchase this equipment from Boundary Medical of Dublin, Ohio. They are the sole dealer for this type of equipment. We've bought equipment from them in the past. So, we're requesting that we use Boundary Medical for the $47,230.96 for this equipment.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
Chief, uh, on this, you know, you and I talked about this, and I brought it up before in, in a public forum. In, in your industry, how close are we coming to arming firefighters?
No, we're not, we're not close at all to arming firefighters. But we are sometimes expected to go into, go into the warm zone and actually administer, um, medical care along, you know, along with the police department. So, it would be the warm zone for us is our, right now is our, that's our limit. And we, and we would be providing care to, um, one of our members that went down or to a victim.
Okay, I'm, well, you know, I've brought this up before, because I recall last year, a couple EMTs getting slashed while they were helping out someone. The person happened to be who they were administering to. He get, he cut them up, uh, cut two of them, really. So, is there anywhere in your industry where they are thinking about arming or EMTs or the firefighters themselves? Because you get, you might get there before the police get there, uh, of something. And you, do you have a feel that you, your guys, men and women, need to be sufficiently, um, protected or armed?
No, um, you know, that's a, that's a, a pretty heavy question to answer just in a, a couple, a couple seconds. But no, the industry standard right now is that firefighters are not, are not gonna be armed as, as we go through this process.
That, that includes EMTs?
Well, they're same. Yeah, the EMTs are, yeah, our firefighters are EMTs, and some are trained to the paramedic level.
Okay, okay. Well, it's just a philosophical question. I'd be interested in, 'cause I don't wanna see you guys get hurt out there. I mean, simply because you, you get on the scene and something, something start happening, and you had to run and get in the truck. You know, the truck gets shot up. I don't know.
Right. Occasionally, that, that may happen, you know, in, in, in industry. But normally, I mean, with our, our police department, we're hand-in-hand, and with, with dispatch, we're able to prioritize those type of calls. And then we can set it. We, we are to stage at that point. We stage until, um, the police officers, uh, secure the scene, and then we come in with that. You know, we try to, um, have, um, we try to use our other resources of, of just educating and knowing what we're trying to face and how, how the type of call comes in, if, if we're gonna be faced with that, that we take, we, we'll take a step back. Sometimes I know it may happen that we're in it, but I think majority of the time that we're able to protect ourselves and take a step back.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm kinda trained to deal with worst-case scenarios. I was in the industry, and that they, they wanted me to think about the worst thing can, can happen, so. Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Just based on that, Councilman Brightwell's question, I, if I remember correctly, or maybe, I don't remember correctly, isn't it illegal for first, for firefighters or paramedics to carry, um, weapons?
I'm, I'm not sure that. I'm not, I'm not sure of, 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 of that, that it's, that, that we can't carry weapons. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't heard of any, any laws like that. But we, we, you know, with us and our department, we, we were, we're not carrying weapons.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve, um, item D, the approval to purchase rescue task force personnel protection equipment, PPE, for the Fire Department.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval to purchase the rescue task force personal protection equipment for the Fire Department as presented tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Good seeing you.
I'm sure Chief Baron wondered if he left any money for him now.
Our next item is the authorization to purchase drones for the Southfield Police Department.
And, and thank you, President and Honorable Members of Council. Mayor, with me, as you've seen before, Lieutenant Matt Taylor and Sergeant Jeremy Pansky. Remember, these are the two who are spearheading this project. So, the police department is requesting authorization to purchase five drones for our agency. As we spoke before, a way to enhance our technology, enhance our response. A quick reminder, we did come before counsel, in April, we put on a presentation. We showed the capabilities and the importance of these drones in the areas of crowd management, accident reconstruction, search and rescue operations, meaning fleeing suspects or missing persons, SWAT operations, and also a good component to our community policing endeavors. The costs came in much lower than we originally anticipated. When we came before you, uh, in the past, we estimated about $38,000. We did work with the purchasing department and did identify five vendors, which NOR Technologies out of Claussen, Michigan, came in at the lowest at $25,145. We are looking to use the forfeiture funds to purchase these drones. The current balance in our forfeiture funds is $428,000 currently. And then the training aspect, as we discussed before, we pay through, through our training funds. And so, again, uh, we are requesting authorization to purchase the five drones.
Counsel?
Madam President?
Councilman Brightwell?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, Chief, you might have mentioned this before. What's the, the proposed delivery date if we purchase these right away?
And so, uh, once this is purchased, we'll look to, uh, wait till the 1st of July, and then we'll push it out. And Sergeant, what's your thought, process and time?
So, yeah, once it's approved, once they, they receive, NOR Technologies has at least the larger drone in stock.
So, it'd be immediate once you, okay, all right, this. You already answered the question about training, so.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you, Chief, for, um, clarifying. I'm like, this item already came to us, I thought. But it's interesting how close the bids were. I mean, I'm just surprised how close they were, so.
Yeah, it's just a matter of, what, a thousand dollars, give or take? Kinda separate everybody.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's a thousand dollars, but yeah, from Michigan to that, you're right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, many, um, Councilwoman Banks, through the chair, several different cities have been be, having bids for drones. So, if you look at our bid opening versus the other cities, they're getting closer and closer as each city moves forward, because they're looking at the previous bids for the city. So, probably in about five more bids, it'll, it'll be even closer.
Be nice if all our bids were this close.
I know, right?
Okay, counsel.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I ain't, I thought you caught me when I hit there. Um, I was just gonna ask Chief Baron. So, who in the department is in charge of the drones? Who monitors those?
So, a great question.
You may have said it earlier, but I didn't recall, so.
Right, so great question. Lieutenant and Sergeant were the primary managers of the program. However, we have had a lot of interests, but we had to be responsible as to the number of people that we trained. So, we shrunk that list down to 15 operators, two of which are sergeants or watch commanders. And then 13 were police officers, and they're spread out through our shifts, to include some of our SWAT team members.
Got you. All right, very good. I think it's a great move.
Everyone wants all the, uh, the cool toys.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sure you want one.
Madam Chair, I had a quick question. So, how effective are these at, at night?
So, they are equipped with the infrared, so if we have a missing person out in some of our woods, uh, we'll pick up their heat signature, uh, and we'll be able to locate them.
Thank you.
Just as an editorial, I think there was an incident in McComb County, just the other, yesterday. Somebody robbed a service station, I believe, and they put a drone up, and they located the, uh, the guy getting away or hiding, something like that. So, they, they, it didn't look very effective.
Yeah, and there's other than, other recent examples, maybe about, uh, about four months or so ago, was a child that was wandering into the woods, I forget which community. And the media showed the heat signature of that child, they were gonna locate him in the dark as well. So, great, uh, great enhancement to our, our program.
Counsel, ready, prepared to vote?
Madam President, I move approval of purchase of drones for the Southfield Police Department.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval to authorize the purchase of drones for the Southfield Police Department as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Uh, next, we have the authorization to purchase city fuel monitoring equipment.
Good evening, council members. The two items I have before you tonight are related. One is a request for authorization to purchase fuel monitoring. That is actually monitoring the pumps, the use, and any leakage. Hopefully, there is none from the tanks. The system replacement was bid out. Two bids were received. The lowest bidder was RW Mercer of Saginaw, Michigan, for $33,396. Um, they, a review of their proposal and of their reputation shows that they are a responsible bidder, and we asked the council for approval.
Counsel? Okay, no questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move the authorization to purchase the city fuel monitoring equipment.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval to authorize the purchase of city fuel monitoring equipment as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item we have is authorization to upgrade the fleet management system for the motor pool division, with the approval of the monitoring, we need to upgrade the software that's actually, takes the report and utilizes it to schedule maintenance, preventive maintenance, also will provide to council a better estimate of when equipment will need to be replaced or exchanged. The bid we received was from Fleet Focus, a software system, this is currently the system we utilize, they are a sole provider, therefore, we ask the city council to purchase the upgrade for fifty thousand five hundred and forty dollars.
Counsel? Councilman Brightwell?
Patrick, I'm, I'm definitely big on fleet management, and I've been, you know, obviously dealing with your, your crews there for quite a while through the Finance Committee with respect to, so, what's the life expectancy of this software?
It depends on how the technology with vehicles goes, it's usually about five to seven years.
Okay, well, and, and the big thing that it can, it should be able to give us the life expectancy of a brand new vehicle, over the period of time, the uses and the mileage and whatever the components that, that go into the life of a vehicle, so we can pinpoint, and, and just from a finance standpoint, this is why, why I've been big on fleet management, you can, you can, you can figure, you can appropriately cash flow, how much cash flow we got put out by vehicles, because vehicles are, you know, is a large expense for our city.
And that's one of the things that for the last ten, fifteen years, the life cycle analysis have come into there, rather than just concentrate on preventive maintenance, it looks at when the costs exceed the value, and the expected cost exceeds the value of the equipment, and then gives you recommendation whether or not it's time to trade in or remove that from the fleet.
Great, yeah, that's, that's excellent too there, and it probably, I know we buy GM vehicles, and most of our vehicles are GMCs or something, so if it gets to some point you can start seeing a tracker, we better start buying Ford vehicles or something, you know.
We actually have a mixture of vehicles depending on the needs, and we go, you know, the lowest bidder, lowest responsible bidder, so some of our equipment is GMC, some of it is Ford, some of it is Chevy, we do have internationals and Freight Liners also.
Okay, will, will the public police vehicles be in this fleet management thing also?
Yes, they will be, they're one of the main users of this program.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, does this software, or will this software work with BSNA?
Yes, that was one of the reasons it was purchased, was to make sure it did, we did forego for a couple of years an upgrade on the system till we could be assured that BSNA was an acceptable use with it.
Okay, could you tell me some of the things or informational pieces that will be received from this, such as like key fob, where cars are, I know, we know age of the car and all that kind of stuff, but what about personal mileage to help with facilitating information for year end?
It, it will give the full readout from the vehicle, anything that's put in, it will be able to read from the fleet management, or the fleet monitor, fuel monitoring, what the system is, I should say, what the vehicle is, what the miles were, what were the odometer readings, it can also then peg that to what is the MPG, what is against an expected MPG, that's how you determine whether or not costs are accelerating, also, you know, based on how many times it's been brought in for maintenance, how is that doing, is there any, as Councilman Brightwell said, is there any problem within, since we buy many of our police departments in, or police department vehicles and fleets, it can tell us if there is a fleet wide problem, can also tell us if there's a fleet wide benefit, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Counsel, are we prepared to vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the authorization to upgrade the fleet management system in, for the motor pool division.
Support.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of the authorization to upgrade the fleet management software system for the motor pool division as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the garage door preventative maintenance and repair proposal.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
The city uses sixty-one overhead vehicle doors at our various locations, we keep a company on contract at least one for preventive and for repairs, we just recently went out for bids in Mitten, the Michigan internet, international governmental trade network, we had three responses, all three firms were found to be suitable, so it really came down to price, independent door was the cheapest for the maintenance, so we're recommending going with them, the bids for repairs were close enough to where any one of the three could be cheaper depending on how much the job is parts, how much is labor, and how many hours, so we're recommending having all three available to us under contract to assure that we have a company when we need them, and to encourage competitiveness.
Okay, Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilwoman Banks?
If we have all three under contract, how does a monthly preventative maintenance work?
Well, the preventative maintenance is just independent door, that's what we're recommending, we're recommending this actually as two sections of the contract, which is how we've always bid it, one for preventive maintenance, in this case, we're recommending independent door, but for repairs, we're recommending to utilize all three companies as needed.
Okay, so when it, when it comes to preventative maintenance, you're saying if Michigan independent doors is not available, then you will go to one of the other two companies?
No, they will do the preventive maintenance, there's no time urgency for preventive maintenance, so they will schedule that throughout the month as it suits them, it doesn't really matter to us, where there's a sense of urgency is when there are repairs, in which case we'll have three companies available to ensure that someone can come out quickly to repair, and so that we can do some price comparisons between the two.
But you've got one company here that's like almost three thousand dollars more a month.
Well, again, that's the preventive maintenance, and frankly, when I reviewed that bid, I think that was a yearly statement for his monthly bids, but in the timeframe between bids were solicited, and he was contacted for clarification, what's the one thing we've all heard about in the news? Inflation. I kind of, my suspicion is that, and that was from the paperwork and looking at the bids, that he was just as happy to walk away from that preventive maintenance, he actually would have been the low bidder if that had been the yearly price.
Okay, so, and if I'm reading this right, Michigan Independent, every time they come out, there's an additional forty-five dollars service fee, so the, like the hourly rate for seventy dollars an hour, there's an additional forty-five dollars added on that, correct? All the way across?
That's correct, that's why at the beginning we discussed that depending on how long the job is, if it's more than one hour, they still may be cheaper, if it's just one hour, they may be more expensive, they're also thirty percent on parts, so there's a lot of variation between the different companies, and we'll be looking at that as we decide which one to call in.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Councilman Brightwell?
John, what, what has been our expenditures in, for this type of service in prior years? I see we, we estimate up to seventy-five, seventy-five thousand.
We have, previous contracts have been for sixty thousand, and it's really varied depending on the doors, you know, the luck of the draw for that year, but we did feel that increasing it from sixty to seventy-five was appropriate because of the way prices are going in general.
Okay, so historically, we, we normally spend about sixty thousand per year on this kind of service?
Well, we've not exceeded sixty thousand, it's really varied depending on our luck as far as broken doors.
Okay, okay, I'm just trying to get a ballpark, so, so you guys calculated this should cover all sixty-one doors, the, whatever might happen during that year, that twelve month period of time.
That's what we're anticipating, of course, nothing's ever guaranteed.
I know things, bad things can happen, yeah, okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel, are we prepared to vote on this?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the, oh, my computer moved on garage door, the garage door preventative maintenance and repair proposals. Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the garage door prevent, preventative maintenance and repair proposal as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, we have the city acquisition of selected twenty-twenty-two tax foreclosure properties and the sale to the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative LLC.
Thank you, Madam President, this evening, the administration is requesting that council consider authorizing the purchase of three properties tax foreclosed by Oakland County, all three are vacant properties, two are on Metalwood Street, they're zoned residential, the assessed value of the first on Metalwood Street is twenty-one hundred forty dollars, the second on Metalwood Street, the assessed value is thirty-two hundred forty dollars, and the third is a vacant piece of property on Melrose Street, located in section thirty-four, the city also zoned residential, it has an assessed value of ten thousand. Should be noted, the first, two parcels are on unimproved property, there is no street, however, there is water supply. In the past, the city has worked with the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative to exercise the right of first refusal, we did that in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and nineteen, there's been a three-year hiatus from the, the program, and we are requesting that the city exercise these three parcels this evening.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none, are we prepared to vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to move the city acquisition of selected twenty-twenty-two tax foreclosed properties and sale to the Southfield, Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative LLC.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz.
Banks.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of city acquisition of selected twenty-twenty-two tax foreclosure properties and sale to the Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative LLC as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we come to the council portion, Counsel, tonight, we'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks?
I don't have anything to add this evening, thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I was just sitting there thinking like, okay, we're almost at the council portion, and I haven't said a whole lot lately necessarily, but I could tell you something that's really been bothering me is the decision on Roe versus Wade, I know that's not a, a local issue, but it's a global, I mean, a national issue that affects all of us from whatever level that we're at.
It's important.
And I think about when I, you know, as, as you all folks know mostly, that, you know, I teach political science, and when I talk about the court system, I try to remind my students all the time that, you know, nothing is done in perpetuity, that whatever's happening today can change tomorrow, with just the, that gavel right there that our president has can open and close this meeting right now, right? And the gavel that is held by federal judges across the country have a lasting impact, they have lifetime appointments, and they generally carry out the will of the people that appointed them at the time, and so even though, you know, you know, for fifty years' time, Roe versus Wade was something that we probably thought, or at least hoped, would never change, but now it's, now it has, right? Plessy versus Ferguson, if we, if we go, go back there and Board, Brown versus the Board of Education, right? One day this is legal, one day it's not, right? Loving versus Virginia, interracial marriage, is legal one, is illegal one day, next day it is, but guess what? It can go back, and Clarence Thomas, hello, I know you're not listening to us out there, but you're married to a woman of another, not, I'm sorry, but you're married to a Caucasian woman, and you're an African-American man, and we're talking about, you're talking about reviewing all these laws that might even come back around to bite you, and what you, you know, the marriage that you're in might be, become illegal one day, and so now what would you have to say about that? Same-sex marriage, same thing, I mean, and that's very new, so I could see that changing real fast, so all I'm just saying to our public, and those that may be listening to us, is in terms of these types of things, is that just be careful who you vote for, be conscious about the, you know, you know, we always talk about make sure you vote, but make sure you know who you're voting for, make sure you know what, what you're voting for, because your vote might go in a direction that ultimately comes back to hurt you, so that's just kind of my public service announcement for the evening, because it really has been troubling me, amongst other things that are going on in the world nationally and internationally, we have to be more active, proactive, and conscious about what's going on around us, and the type of people we put into certain offices, because they will have effect on your life, your children, your grandchildren, nieces, nephews, everybody, everything comes back down to politics, and so all I say is vote your conscience, I'm not trying to make a move one way or other, I'm just saying, just think through these things before you go out there and cast those votes, for whomever it might be, for whatever position, but all politics are local, and this is where it starts, right here. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, thank you, very well said. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, thank you, just a couple of Parks and Rec announcements as we're getting into the warmer season, there's a lot going on, we heard at the beginning of our meeting from our Parks and Rec director that unfortunately this year our pool is closed, but we will have some information up on our city's website and hopefully social media and other media avenues of options for our residents to partake in swimming activities. We also have something coming up this, this week, Wednesday, in front of City Hall, it's a free event, it starts at six o'clock, goes till nine-thirty, it is the Park It Family Fun Night, there will be bounce houses, food trucks, different things, it's a free event, and then at the end, beginning at eight-twenty, they will show, be showing the movie outside in Canto, bring folding chairs, blankets, bug spray, anything that you need to make that movie experience wonderful. Again, that is all free here, Wednesday evening, starting at six, with the movie starting at eight-twenty, and then also every Tuesday, and almost every Tuesday and Thursday, we also have Recreation Park on the Move, where they will switch off at different parks from four to six PM, different, going to different neighborhood parks, giving out activities for kids and whatnot, and it's definitely something you can take, take part of, it's also free, and it also gives you exposure to all the different parks that we have within the cities, and that schedule can be found on the city's website under the Parks and Recreation page, so while the weather is beautiful and nice, and before it starts to get cold again, to please take, take part of these activities, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I want to add an addendum to my original comment about Colonel Jefferson, his, his interview is with the Library of Congress, it's approximately about one hour, and he details his life before the military, and that website is again, WWW, let me, dot LOC, that's Library of Congress, LOC.gov, and once you get to the site, you would look for the Veterans History Project, and obviously you can scan, you can re- And obviously, you can scan, you can, you can poll that site by putting in Jefferson's name, or you could put, even put in City of Southfield, because the City of Southfield, we have about three hundred interviews there on that particular site. And you can just look for the city and/or Alexander Jefferson. And it's a very, very interesting interview. And Colonel Jefferson is, was a lively guy. And he came across in that interview, it'd be very lively. He got shot down over Germany. He became a POW. And he tells a very interesting story about being in that POW camp. So I encourage everyone to just look at it and listen to his story. It's a very inspiring story. And matter of fact, the movie Red Tail, the gentleman that got shot down in the movie, that was Colonel Jefferson's his, his experience in the military. They, they use his, his life experience there in the movie Red Tail. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening. Mayor?
Yeah, I would add a Colonel Jefferson's story as well. Last year, I was invited, last November, to attend the dedication of the Alexander Jefferson Field at Rouge Park. As a boy, he used to fly planes there. And so he's always had a fascination with air and piloting. Colonel Jefferson attended the event. He arrived in a wheelchair, but he insisted on walking to the front of the gathering in the park on his own two feet. It was a very nice event, and very glad that it happened while he was still alive. The other thing I would add tonight is that Fourth of July is coming up, and there's an annual parade in Magnolia and Roseland Woods. This year, Roseland Woods is organizing the parade and the picnic that follows. It has come to my attention that you may not have gotten an invitation. They were supposed to have been sent by Roseland Woods as they're the organizers this year. So I want to mention that you're all invited if you'd like to attend. The parade starts at ten A.M. at Magnolia Center, winds its way through Magnolia Neighborhood and then through Roseland Woods, and ends up in the field behind Bracelet Relief School. And again, that's on Monday, the Fourth of July. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sure, sure.
How do we, how do we get information on that? Because I haven't gotten any. And how do we pay if we, who do we pay?
You know, it's, Tabita Paramore is the neighborhood chair in Roseland Woods. I, I provided her with your information. I don't, I don't know what happens, but somebody said they didn't get anything. So I thought, well, I'll mention it tonight to all of you. So again, it's ten A.M. starting at Magnolia Center.
So same starting point that we always.
Yeah, the parade, so it's reversed because it's Roseland Woods's year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Administration?
Thank you, Madam President. While we're on the theme of fireworks, fireworks can be set off between eleven A.M. and eleven forty-five P.M. June twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and the first through the fourth. They cannot be set off on Monday, July fifth. So just a reminder, the information is available on the city's website, and that ordinance, that is by city ordinance, and it's pretty much dictated by state law. My only other comment is, some of you may recall, there was been some recent conversation about the Nine Mile Recreation Corridor. And I learned this afternoon that SEMCOG is funding of just under a fifty thousand dollar grant to do that study between Hazel Park, Oak Park, Ferndale, Southfield, and Farmington Hills, and the City of Farmington. That, the focus there is the Nine Mile Path, which we have been building. It takes advantage of a lot of the existing infrastructure. And as we talk about pools, I previously mentioned that three of our neighbors to the east, Hazel Park, Ferndale, and Oak Park, already have an interlocal agreement for recreation amenities. And I think this could be a future opportunity for Southfield to explore new options as a community to strengthen recreation opportunities for all, for all of our residents as well. That's all I have this evening. Happy Fourth of July.
May I add something to that? Tomorrow at four-thirty, Oak Park will be dedicating their new trail. It's, I didn't bring the invitation down, but it's, I'm sure it's on the Oak Park City website. Also, the, we've made a inquiry to Lawrence Tech if they would be interested in doing another Welcome to Southfield sign, this time at Nine Mile and Greenfield. As right now, when you cross over into Southfield, there's a little green sign that says, Southfield City Limit, and a big sign that says, No Overnight Parking from two A.M. to five A.M. That's your Welcome to Southfield. So we have met with the building owner, the advanced building owner, and they are willing to give up some space on the corner there. And the Art Commission is also involved in and has, the owner of two buildings on Nine Mile has expressed interest in public art to go along the pathway. So we're working along, and we also will be seeing a new sidewalk on Nine Mile and Southfield between and Cornell. Funding is in place for that.
Excellent. Okay, Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, everyone. So what I was going to present, and what I'm ready to present, is an amendment to the animal ordinance. I did ask that Officer Shannon Raby be here tonight, as she was on council president. And she had a family emergency in Traverse City, so she's not here. But I can go forward so we can at least have a discussion, because we've been talking about exotic animals for some time. The one thing that comes to my mind is there was someone that had a monkey, some type of exotic monkey in another city. I think at the beginning of COVID, and then we would get the telephone calls in our office. You know, can we bring these to the City of Southfield? And so as I was talking with Officer Shannon Raby during different animal complaints, she also works with other animal control officers in other municipalities who then became aware of other kinds of exotic animals, those animals that are not native to Michigan, that people were bringing into our city, because they would look at the ordinances. And most of the cities in this area, they either do not address keeping wild or exotic animals. They may, I didn't see any have a permitting process, or they just prohibit the wild animals or exotic species. And so that was the approach that I had discussed with Officer Shannon. And so, whoops, I gotta find it now. So then we worked together, and she presented to me a model ordinance to use, which basically changes the definition section of our animal ordinance. So we already said, you know, no dangerous animals, but now we added, or exotic animals. And we had a long list of exotic animals. And then the next section was that you cannot harbor the dangerous animal, nor could you harbor an exotic animal, which we also said included animals that are not native to Michigan. And even when I went to what we call EMDAR, the Michigan Department of Agriculture, David will have to help me remember those words, but they talk about, you know, the animals that are non-domestic and not native to Michigan. So basically, what we were presenting tonight was adding the definition of wild or exotic animals. And then we also went from there, once we defined that, to saying you cannot harbor a dangerous or exotic animal. And once again, we added that these animals not native in the, to the state of Michigan. And then we even went to keeping other animals, which was already there that references foul, but we always had that one hundred and seventy-five-foot rule. But we just wanted to also reference the zoning ordinance, so that if someone, just for whatever reason, thought, I'm just gonna put chicken coops all over my yard, they need to go back to reference the zoning ordinance also. So that is what I had to present tonight. Unfortunately, Officer Raby is not here, so I can answer questions as best I can from the council.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any questions regarding this? Okay, so we, we don't have any questions, so what would be our next? I'm sorry, Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah. This is, this is more about procedure. And I spoke to Ms. Banks about this, and I spoke to you about it too, about cats. What do we need to do to get some ordinance with respect to feral cats? Because I'm, I have, we have a resident that is she gets visited by a little herd of those cats, and she, they are caught on her, what's called monitoring system, and she see them nightly.
I don't have that information tonight, Councilman Brightwell. I know it's the trap neuter release, the the trap neuter release program. I'm somewhat familiar with that. So that's something I would have to discuss with Officer Raby, but it's the T N R program. You trap these feral cats.
Okay.
You neuter them, spay them, but then they are released. And that is supposed to be an option to stop these wild cats, but I don't have that information.
Okay.
That's something I'll go back to her again, because yes, you and I did talk about that, and I think I may have sent you something.
Yeah, you did.
Particularly to Michigan, but a lot of communities use the T N R trap neuter release.
But that's fine. I wanted to just know what the procedure, but I, I didn't want to run it through the Finance Committee, because we got, we got enough to do. And it's real, real, we're real busy. But I said that because several years ago, I ran wild dogs, vicious dogs through the Finance Committee, but we got, I got that approval ordinance. So should we just get it on the Legislative Committee? Or how best to get it?
Madam President, if I could, yes, that is a legislative matter that we had taken on some year, a couple of years back. Me, myself, Mr. Frazier, and I forget who the third party was, but we have to, we can revive that again. So I think if we talk to Mr. Hoskins, we can get that back on the agenda and talk about that. Yeah. Because it, it was in legislative already.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I guess I spoke to Ms. Banks about it, but I guess it's the more appropriate thing to do is run it through the Legislative.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, then. We'll, we'll forward it to the Legislative then.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. So what are you looking for us to do tonight?
So tonight was introduction and approval, or if we're not having a hybrid, then I would bring it back to the next meeting.
It's a pleasure to counsel. I would recommend that we have a, tonight was just a proposed amendment. However, our animal warden wasn't here. Were there any questions that you wanted to pertain directly to her? Or did you guys just want to move forward?
I think we just want to move forward.
Okay. I mean, I had to get the clarification, because she was, it was said that she was going to be here. So at that point, we could just move forward with it.
I would also recommend you move forward. I mean, I have residents that have been waiting for this ordinance. We have a number of instances. And in speaking with both Oak Park and Royal Oak, this has become a big issue there in neighboring communities.
Okay.
Between cats, alligators, and big cats I'm talking about, not little cats. Wildcats, not feral cats.
So whatever moving forward next steps would be?
Will you want this approved tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that the proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter One Thirteen Animals be approved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by
Everybody.
Council, Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of the proposed ord, animal ordinance as presented here tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there an ordinance number?
The ordinance number will remain the same, because it's an amendment to a current ordinance. That's, that was the direction of our legal department.
Oh, I thought we always gave it new ordinance numbers.
I just, I thought I got a new ordinance number also.
You can give it to a, the past, you guys didn't, so.
It's a new ordinance number, isn't it?
I thought, I thought MUNICO would.
You can give it, we can give it a new one. That's fine. But I was told two different things, so go ahead. I'll give you a new ordinance number.
Okay.
One second. Second, because they logged me out, because I was logged into this system, so give me a moment. Seventeen fifty-five.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would like to move that council approve ordinance seventeen fifty-five, an amendment to Chapter One Thirteen Animals.
Support.
Is it, I thought, are we introducing it?
It was already, it was already a motion, so we just need to amend the motion to add the ordinance number.
Well, actually, I meant to say introduce. We approve, yeah, introduce. I'm sorry, introduce ordinance number seventeen fifty-five, an ordinance to amend Chapter One Thirteen Animals.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz to introduce ordinance, proposed ordinance numbers, one seven five five, for the amendment to the Chapter One Thirteen Animal Ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Second item.
Yes, the second item. I have the Wildlife Commission here. I will turn it over to Davis Shepherd. We have, well, he has a presentation, a PowerPoint. The one thing I did want to ask, that this advisory ballot question is not binding. So after, I'm sure as he discusses, it will reiterate that this is a non-binding question that is being proposed to put on the November ballot. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you. Members of council, thanks for welcoming, welcoming me back. So I'm here today to explain why the commission's proposing this ballot question, and I kind of want to just go through a little bit of background about what we've been doing for the last year and a half, two years, some of the data we have for Southfield, and then why the ballot question is the option we're proposing today, although we do have an alternative if that doesn't fly, so. One of the issues that the Wildlife Commission has been tackling is what to do about some of the residential complaints with deer. There are parts of the city that have a lot of deer. There's parts of city, the city that don't have a ton. But ultimately, when you talk about wildlife management, the way that the professionals talk about it is finding this balance between the biological carrying capacity and your social carrying capacity. And it's basically that, finding that sweet spot between where the environment can sustain all the animals, and the people that live there and have to deal with them are willing to put up with the animals. They're not always the same number. Oftentimes, there's some distance between them. So this is just kind of an illustrative graph. There's a lot of things that can impact this. For wildlife, it tends to be food, water, shelter, and availability of mates are the big things that impact them. that impact them. So what we're looking for is the sweet spot between the two dotted lines you see on the curve there. Um, you know, and what's unknown here in Southfield really is what density of deer and how many deer in the city are residents really willing to put up with? And that may vary depending on where people live in the city, and it may vary depending on what their interactions are. Uh, but our commission hasn't been able to get a lot of great data, um, from residents about what they feel. Uh, we did do an informal survey, uh, last year that I'll talk about, um, that had about three, a little less than three hundred respondents to it. But beyond that, we've gotten some anecdotal reports that have made their way back to us, but not a lot of people coming to meetings. Uh, so one thing we are looking at doing is regardless of what you decide tonight, is working with the city administration, um, Parks and Rec, and the Public Relations Department to do more community engagement and provide more educational events for residents, no matter which direction the city goes, because that is something we did see a lot of support for. So when we talk about deer, urban deer management, you know, the biggest thing that comes to mind, I think, for most people is population control. But ultimately, it's a when necessary type of thing. So, um, all of the literature that's, uh, been updated over the years is really moving towards this idea of, um, community-centered wildlife management as opposed, as opposed to what the traditional method was, was just having a game order and making decisions unilaterally. And part of that is because you want to give your community ownership of the issue, so they feel like they're involved, they feel like, um, they're getting consulted, and so that people have some say in the outcomes. Um, and part of our role, as we see it, is to help provide information so people can make educated decisions. So, just a little background info on deer. Uh, in Michigan, we have mostly whitetail deer. Uh, there has been talk among residents and people on the commission about how far do the animals travel? Well, really, most of our does, which is most of our local city population, they don't move very far. They stay within about a quarter mile radius of a primary area, according to our local biologists with DNR. The bucks travel a lot further, and they do that during the mating season. Um, our local regional biologist has said that while the wildland density varies a lot in urban areas, suburban areas, it's normally about twenty deer per square mile is typically what an environment can sustain. Um, and those numbers can vary a bit, too. And then if it comes to population control, there's really four, three primary options and a hybrid option that communities have used. One is the sterilization birth control method, which can involve surgery or chemical birth controls. That's the most expensive, um, of the options out there. It also is non-lethal, though, so some people do like it. One of the downsides is, is that every deer has to be captured and tagged during the process so that DNR can monitor them when they go back out, because they are deemed inedible, so they cannot be harvested by hunters and then eaten after the fact. Um, the more common method for most communities is to use professional sharpshooters, either through a hired private contractor or partnering with, um, Department of Agriculture. The Federal Department of Agriculture actually has contractors. The East Lansing used recently. Some other federal and state agencies may be able to provide that. But, um, Ann Arbor, for example, used a private contractor instead. Uh, and then a third option, which is one that we saw Meridian Township up by, right next door to East Lansing use, was to use, uh, local hunters for some of it. Uh, and they were able to do this because, A, they don't have as many restrictive ordinances. They're a bit more rural of a township, and they had a lot more public space where they could open this up and bring in, uh, archery hunters, um, to help remove some of the deer on very limited time periods with lots of signage, lots of safety protocols. And then they also actually used their police force a little bit to pick up the slack there. Um, that may or may not be an option in this community. I don't think our police chief is very fond of that idea, based on the feedback we've gotten initially. Um, and then there's always the hybrid options, where you could mix and match some of these different things. And that is what Ann Arbor did initially. They went, um, looked into the sterilization and birth control option for a while, and then moved towards the sharpshooters after a period. I don't know the precise reasons for that, but costs may have been a part of it, um, just because they are dramatic differences. So what do we know about Southfield's deer population? I don't want you to get hung up on the numbers too much, because we don't know if they are super precise. One thing I've heard about all of these surveying techniques, when we're doing aerial surveys, is that they can vary, because it depends on conditions and what your people in the helicopter can actually see. But I can tell you that we do have more data than many communities have had when they've gone into this process on their own, because Southfield has been doing aerial surveys for a number of years. And back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, there was a ecological study done on some of our local parks to see what impacts on local vegetation and native vegetation the deer were having, so. Um, just more general information about deer. Does, the average birth rate is about one point eight fawns per year, and the survival rate's as high as eighty-seven percent. In suburban environments, you see more twins and more of both twins surviving. So you could have one doe producing two offspring each year, um, and a buck can mate with many, many does during the year. So the population numbers can grow very quickly, if there are not other things keeping them in check. Uh, natural factors would be predators, disease, age. And then in areas where hunting's allowed, hunting is a big factor. And then also car accidents is a big factor. Uh, so, that sweet spot we're kind of looking for from an ecological perspective is about twenty animals per square, uh, per square mile. The most recent survey that we did, and I do want to point out that there is a correction up on this number from what the original resolution language presented, because we discovered a mistake in the data we got from Farmington Hills. I think it was just a typo. Um, but the total citywide estimate was about four hundred forty-seven deer, which is about eleven point five per square mile. But if you look at the areas along kind of the Inkster Road corridor, and then some areas north of Thirteen Mile, there are certain areas in the city where the density gets as high as forty-nine percent, or forty-nine animals per square mile. So some residents in our city are having an extreme overpopulation issue, and then some residents in our city are not seeing really any deer at all. Um, so if there are efforts to be undertaken, it's probably going to be a targeted effort, not a citywide effort, and it would be something we'd have to plan as a community and with whatever contractors or consultants we use. Um, but as you can see, over time, there has been a general trend upward in the population numbers. In two thousand nineteen, the estimate was about two forty-eight. Twenty twenty was two seventy-nine. Twenty twenty-one was a big spike of eight sixty-nine. Don't know exactly why that was. And then last year was four forty-seven. Some of that decline could have been because we did have a natural disease come through Oakland County that was carried by some of the insects in the area, and that did probably kill off some of our deer. We heard reports from around the area, and we know DPW picked up a few of them. Another thing to think about with deer is that they tend to clump in the green spaces and along waterways, which is part of the reason we see a lot of them in the more western parts of the city, and then some of the northern parts of the city up by Thirteen and Fourteen Mile. Those tend to be where the River Rouge Corridor is, where some of our bigger lots are for residential areas, and where we have a lot of open spaces, parks, the Carpenter Lake Natural Area, things like that. So it's not surprising that that's the primary area we see with the deer. Um, one of the downsides, I suppose, if you want to think of it a downside, of improving our natural environment in Southfield is we've once again made it more attractive for wildlife. So we've done a good thing, the wildlife's coming back, we now got to learn to live with them. Uh, since two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, though, we have seen deer moving further west, or further east, um, and we do know that they live generally two to three years is an average lifespan, but they can get as old as ten in the wild, too. Um, and in cities, they do tend to live longer, because unless a car hits them, there's not a whole lot coming after deer. So the next few graphics are just some, to illustrate some of the data. So this is a distribution map of the most recent twenty-two, twenty twenty-two survey. Um, as you can see, the bubbles are kind of proportionally sized to illustrate how many deer were spotted in an area from the helicopter. And you can see that there are definitely some areas where they're clumping, up here in the Thirteen, Fourteen Mile area, a lot down here between Eleven Mile and Nine Mile west of Telegraph, but then they are slowly moving towards the city center in this direction. This map, um, I just want to talk to you a bit about, is the density. So, um, the line right down the middle is Inkster Road, so that's the barrier between us and Farmington Hills. And then the numbers in each box, that is a number of animals spotted within that one square mile box. And so each number you can take as for a that square mile, that was the density of animals per square mile at the time the survey was done. Um, again, you can see that some areas here have much higher density than others, and then some parts of our city have basically none. But both our community and Farmington Hills have a pretty big patch of deer right along the central corridor, which matches up with a lot of the green space that's in both communities. Um, so this isn't an issue just for us, you know? Our neighbors are dealing with it, too, and Farmington Hills is looking at these issues as well. We did last year, uh, present a rev, resolution that the council approved to start working on kind of a regional approach, um, to talk with the county and other communities in the area. Uh, those meetings are still very much in their infancy. They've just started talking, really. And while I am fully supportive, and I think everyone on the commission is supportive, of a regional approach to this, I do think it's, realistically speaking, going to be years before we see much happening at the county level, just because of the way, uh, the bureaucratic process works, getting funding works, and figuring out who's going to be carrying the ball and what they're going to do. Um, another issue we looked at was car accidents and the resources our community is using to pick up roadkill. So we do know that between two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty, the city was spending between about twenty-eight thousand and almost thirty thousand dollars a year in picking up roadkill animals, mostly deer. I don't have the figures for two thousand twenty-one, but I expect that it was probably about the same, if not higher, because, um, one of the next graphics will show you that we actually had a lot more pickups in the last year than previously. Uh, the car crash data is only, uh, from Clemis is on the bottom. This is only what is reported to, uh, local law enforcement, and then recorded by the County Road Commission. That data tends to take a while to get updated, because they don't really track it very closely, so I wasn't able to get super updated data. But we are averaging over fifty car accidents that are reported per year, and in some years, it's been closer to a hundred car accidents. Um, this graphic is just showing you where our DPW's picking up deer, um, as of two thousand twenty. We had about sixty-eight different pickups, and it spikes around the rutting season, which is the fall. So, um, again, a lot of the same corridors you saw on the other maps, the Ten Mile, Nine Mile area, near Berg Road, and around the River Rouge River. And then in two thousand twenty-one, we went from sixty-eight carcass pickups to a hundred and four carcass pickups. So we did have a lot more deer getting picked up by DPW for one reason or another, because they were dead. Some of this is car accidents, some of it could have been that disease that I mentioned that went through. We do know that that killed some animals in the community. Um, but ultimately, that is, uh, manpower and labor that's being used. And we have had residents that have complained about, um, when the animals do die on their property. There were some difficulties in the past about getting them picked up. Uh, we've been working with the administration and DPW to try and revise those policies so that our DPW workers can at least go onto the property and hopefully help with getting them up to the curb and getting rid of them. Uh, but it's not an easy job to drag a large dead animal out to the road, and we don't want our elderly residents, or really any of them, handling that when they don't have to. Um, and then this data on this one is a little bit outdated, but this was the data I did have from the Road Commission about crashes. Um, a lot of this, again, this is only what's reported. So we have a number of crashes throughout the area, um, over the last couple of years. I expect these patterns are probably fairly similar. So a lot of what you see is on Ten Mile Road, there's some stuff around the interstate, um, and then some of the residential communities as well. Surprisingly, Telegraph has not been a big spot for deer car accidents, though. So, the reason we're offering this ballot question is primarily because this is potentially a very effective way to get broad, widespread feedback from the community. It is a gubernatorial election year, there's a number of important things on the ballot this year. Uh, we expect that there's probably going to be a good turnout at the ballot box. So a non-binding advisory question would potentially get a lot of feedback from our residents directly, and would give the council a good idea of what people want to do. We know that from the last survey we did, we got less than three hundred responses, so less than one percent of our population. I've been told by our Public Relations Director, Mr. Mannion, that that's actually not a bad response rate for some of the surveys, but it's clearly not super representative of the community. Uh, if we were going to do something other than a ballot question, uh, we would probably want to work with him to do a more structured survey, um, that can be more statistically defensible. That way, we're ensuring we get a good sample size and can actually draw reliable inferences off of it. This was something that we really just put together and then pushed out to residents, um, through the means that we had. But there are more effective ways to do it if we wanted to do another informal survey. Um, and then as I mentioned, no matter what the council votes on and decides to do, we do plan to continue working with the city administration on educational materials and community engagement. Um, a ballot question would kind of help us aim and direct some of those efforts over the next few months, um, with the hope of providing people just with information to make a decision when they're voting on the ballot, without taking a position on it one way or another. We would do everything we can to remain neutral and make sure the city remains neutral on it. Uh, but the thought is, is we could help host some community town halls with the homeowners associations, uh, perhaps a broader, just, um, private panel forum, where we could bring in experts, um, some biologists and some other individuals in the field to answer resident questions, and just provide people in area to air their grievances or concerns about it, um, just so that we're getting this feedback from people. Uh, and then we also did consult with a Professor Alexa Warwick at MSU, who is the expert who helped MSU do their research and lead up into their ba, um, into their deer thinning that they did just this last year. For them, that was about a four or five-year effort that they did, um, to get there, and they partnered with her, the state DNR, who she works closely with through DNR, and then, uh, Department, the Federal Department of Agriculture, um, to put that into place. And they actually ended up having a very successful, um, population thinning. It took some time. Uh, they went back to the drawing board a couple times over a couple of years, but ultimately decided to move forward with it without doing a ballot question. And, uh, they got through it with very minimal public resistance. There was a, a few people that were opposed to it, but it ultimately didn't materialize into any large protests or any type of lawsuits or anything like that. Um, some other communities have not been so lucky. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you that. Uh, Ann Arbor, I do believe, did get sued its first year. I don't think they've had legal trouble since then. And, uh, when Rochester Hills originally did its, um, hunt or cull of deer in its community, there was a large public backlash to that. Um, I have been told by some people at DNR that part of the thought is, um, Rochester Hills may have just put the cart before the horse, and they made a decision without doing a lot of community engagement ahead of it. And that was something that Professor Warwick really emphasized, is that in any community that she's seen that's done this successfully, uh, getting the community involved has been a key component of it, because people want to know what's going on. They want their questions answered, and they want to make sure it's going to be safe. Uh, another reason we're proposing this now is just kind of a practical consideration. If the city was to authorize some type of hunt or cull or thinning of the deer population, with the way the permitting process and the hunting season works with DNR, this would be an out-of-season, uh, hunt-type event that requires a special permit. It has to be done around January, February. So in my estimates, you know, even if this was to go on the ballot, we were to get a favorable response, the city council was to quickly approve something and start the ball rolling on planning. I think that, uh, early two thousand twenty-four is realistically the soonest we would see us in a position where we could take care of this, because there's a lot of logistical and technical things that need to get done in the meantime. Um, not only selecting a contractor or service to use, but also making sure that we make any changes to our ordinances that we knew, uh, need to, so that this could happen legally within the city. Making sure that we're getting public notices out to people, make sure everyone knows where the hunts or the thinning would be occurring and things like that. So it is a labor-intensive process, um, and it is also, also a multi-year commitment if the city does decide to take this path. Anytime you're doing wildlife management, it's going to take you two to three years before you're going to really know how effective your program's been. Uh, and most communities that have taken this on have committed to a four- or five-year process before they reassess and decide whether to continue moving forward with it. So it's a multi-year commitment on a couple of different levels. So the actual language we have proposed is, "Do you support the reduction of the deer herd in the city of Southfield by humane lethal means with the intent to engage local partners and ensure that the donation of meat deemed safe and where feasible is made to local food banks and similar organizations?" We came up with this language with a few things in mind. One, we wanted to be as transparent and clear in what was being proposed as possible. Uh, the word "cull" is a technical term that the Department of Agriculture uses, but it does have some stigma attached to it, and I personally don't think that all of our residents would understand what that term means. Um, we would be talking about, and what we're proposing, is killing deer. Um, doing it humanely as possible through a, uh, professional service. Um, but that is what it would be at the end of the day. And we wanted to include the language about donating meat, because there is a large nonprofit based here in Michigan called Hunters Against Hunger, which has worked with a number of communities throughout the state to ensure that meat, uh, deer that are killed through these types of coals or harvests are then processed, um, tested to make sure that they're safe, but then all of the meat gets distributed out to food banks and other facilities throughout Michigan. And one benefit of working with that nonprofit is that they're able to use the funds they raise through their charity and nonprofit works to cover the processing fees and to pay the butchers to take care of that, uh, so it doesn't end up being something the municipality has to pay for. So what are the justifications for it? Um, as far as the data goes, we know that at least some areas of our city, and the areas that we're receiving the most complaints from, um, the numbers are there to justify lowering the population numbers. Not on a citywide basis, because we do have many areas where the deer just aren't there. But in the areas where we're seeing thirty or forty animals or more per square mile, that is an ecologically unsustainable number. So we really need to know if the residents are willing to support that type of action. But from an ecological perspective, But from an ecological perspective, the numbers are there to justify it. The other consideration, as I mentioned earlier, is that there just aren't a lot of natural things that keep deer populations under control when you don't have natural predators. Other than coyotes, which have been seen in the city, you know, over the last several years, there isn't anything else that's going to be killing a deer other than disease, old age, or a cough here in Southfield. So they are a top-level herbivore in the city, nothing really comes after them, and it's frankly not very natural for coyotes to go after fully grown deer either. In municipal areas, they have been known to group together and pack a little bit more or to take out fawns, but generally coyotes are not a natural predator of deer. It's normally larger predators like bear, cougar, and wolves that would take them out in the wild. The other justification is the impacts on our natural areas in the city. I know the city values its parks and its natural spaces, and we're actually putting a lot of effort into upgrading some of our parks and getting people out there. The 2018-2019 browse study that was done back when the population numbers were quite a bit lower was already showing that there was a significant impact on native vegetation to the point where natural oaks and other native plants were not coming back because they were being over-browed so heavily. And so that is something that bringing the numbers back down could help, is that if we want to promote the regeneration of native Michigan plants in our natural areas, having fewer deer would help with that, in theory, because the deer like the native plants, they don't eat as many of the invasive plants. The other factor is that while we did have, the council did approve a no-feed ordinance, that's really designed to mitigate human-deer conflict and to try and help reestablish some of those barriers. Ultimately, that's not going to control population numbers. And then, as I mentioned, the regional approach that was approved is likely going to take years to really bear any fruit. So the city is in a position where we could take ownership of this on our own and move forward with some form of action, but ultimately, those of us on the commission really would like to get more input from the residents and see what the residential support is for this type of program because it is a long-term commitment, it's a financial commitment, and it's something that's going to need to, we would need to maintain an open line of communication with our residents to make sure they know what's going on and why. I also wanted to bring up that there are some risks of doing an advisory ballot question. One of the biggest ones is the uncertainty that could result if the question is voted down, and especially if it's voted down by a wide margin. We don't really know what the residents of the city at large think, but when we did do the smaller survey last year, those respondents responded about 60-40 against lethal population control, they were about 60-40 in favor of non-lethal population control, and over 70% were in favor of some more action from the city. So I don't know if those numbers are representative of the city as a whole. When we did ask that question, it was with the out-regard to costs, so we were not providing anything in the survey to explain what the financial impact of doing a birth control or sterilization program would be as opposed to a hunt-type program. So one question would be is, would non-lethal options be a financially viable option for the city at all, if that's what people wanted to go with? That is an open question. It's a lot more money, it would be something that would need to be budgeted for. Another question is, you know, what is a community education and engagement program going to look like if there's not a specific goal? My thought is, is that we would still move forward with a lot of the same efforts that we would be planning on doing anyways. We just wouldn't be highlighting that, hey, this is something you're going to be asked to vote on in November. It would be more of just a purely informational format, and we'd still like to have one or two events a year to make sure the residents are staying up to date, as well as working with Mr. Mannion to get some more information up on the city's website that could be useful. There's, you know, in today's political climate, there's always the risk of polarization among issues, and I do know that for people that are opposed or in favor of deer management, it can be a polarizing issue. We did see that at a work group that Farmington Hills did last year, late last year, where a few of the residents got a little heated when the Q&amp;A session came up. I'm hopeful that we can avoid things like that with any public forums we do, just by using a moderator and hopefully keeping things orderly. The other risk is that if the city does decide to move forward with something regardless of the ballot box result, is that someone could always take legal action against the city to try and hold it up. There's really nothing we can do about that, but we do know that the city of Ann Arbor was sued when they first tried to implement a deer management program, so it is something that's out there. I'm not aware of any programs that have been shut down by courts over the long term, so long as all of the proper procedures were followed and getting it put in place, adopting it, and moving forward. And then I did just want to bring up that if the council is uncomfortable with doing the ballot question itself, we could do some more surveying tactics. And as I suggested earlier, if we were going to do that, I would just want to work with the administration to make sure that we are doing a more formal and statistically defensible survey, so we would probably want to make sure that we're screening our questions a little bit more, selecting kind of a target sample group of a certain size, and then making sure that we get all the data back and tabulate it really carefully so that we can try and make a decision based off of that. But that's everything I have presentation-wise, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. The one thing I did want to bring up is that if you were to vote to approve the resolution, I would suggest striking the second paragraph of the whereas clauses in the resolution because that one was based on what appears to be a typo in the Farmington Hills data, and we found out that that math on the deer density was just not accurate based on the numbers they actually provided us. So I would propose striking that paragraph.
Thank you. Great presentation. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just had, that was a lot right there, but you know, got the point. So you're coming to us today asking us, as a council, to place this on the ballot for November?
Yes, sir.
That is correct, okay. And Madam Clerk, if you can assist me a little bit maybe, and you can too, there is another option of the group petitioning to have it on the ballot too as well, is that correct? Can we do a signature-type thing?
To my knowledge, not for an advisory-based question, no. This is an advisory-based question where the confusion often comes in, is when you have advisory-based questions on the ballot, they often will confuse that with an ordinance amendment that can be placed on the ballot if the signatures came in, and/or a charter amendment or a new proposal. So if indeed this was the direction that the council would want to go, I would recommend putting some funding behind it to say that this is an advisory question, because even with this just being on the agenda tonight, my staff, we've got about 11 questions because people were thinking that this is a charter amendment. And we don't have anything in a charter about this, so we would really have to be clear and concise about the messaging if council does move forward because it's already a little bit of confusion on exactly what this is and if we were to place it on the ballot. So we would need very strategic communication patterns, and also, as of right now, it would be on the back of the ballot, at the bottom. So it would be some things we would need to communicate so that our voters are not confused and they know exactly what we're doing with this advisory question.
Okay, that clears up a lot for me because I myself was just a little bit confused. I'm like, I'm not quite putting it together there. So that makes better sense in my mind, because I was just thinking of the ideal of petitioning for it as if it was an ordinance change or something. That would give you kind of the feedback, and people would be able to talk to you and know what this is all about. But if this were like Clerk Hawkins has said, more of an advisory-type thing. So we're just testing the waters a little bit more is what we're asking, and maybe may need some council support financially to help clarify.
Yes, this would not be binding on the council or the city to take action. We have talked with Mr. Mannion in public relations, and his goal would be is that if this is the path the city chooses to make, he would want to work with the commission to do very targeted work with the community to make sure that both what's on our website, what's getting said at community meetings, and what the city's putting out is just making it very clear that this is a non-binding advisory question. We're looking for input, the city's not taking a position on it, but we want to know what residents think.
Right, and as you said, I think, well, you didn't quite say it the same way, but it's kind of a double-edged sword, you know, but it's only one way to find out is to jump on in there, but because your numbers are real close, 60-40, 40-60, either way, kind of would depend on how you ask it or couch it and everything like that. And so you want to, you don't want to do yourself any harm in the process, so that why the clarity is necessary as far as I can see. So that was all I had, Madam President, so I'm very, I'm clear on this, and sounds, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, well, two things. One, why would they do it, you had something that they would do is culling out of season. What's the rationale? What's the rationale for that? If it's in season, you're going to have more of them around, huh?
So it's the, it has something to do with the way the hunting permitting system works with the DNR. So with a normal hunt season, you would have just recreational hunters with their tags that they have going out into areas where they're allowed to hunt. There is nowhere in the city limits within Southfield where anyone is allowed to hunt recreationally. So when cities do these types of programs to manage their populations and lower, DNR has a special permitting process that they allow, and the window that they have for that is around the January, February period, so it's outside of the normal hunting season in winter, and that's just the way DNR has already handled it. We have been told that the regional biologist doesn't think that getting the permits would be difficult, and DNR is always willing to work with communities on this. They don't generally take much of a lead on it, though. They really kind of defer to counties and local communities as to how they want to handle these things.
Okay, no, it would just, it didn't make sense to me, but now I understand that rule is probably for the state of Michigan, whereas these urban, it might not be applicable for us per se, but we had to follow the rules.
That's my understanding, is that it's most likely a statewide regulation.
Yeah, this, and I clearly don't want to make a move without the support of the citizenry of the city of Southfield. So if we get something on the ballot, I would want us to spend enough money educating the citizens that this is on the ballot and this is what it is, and go through the normal process of educating them. So whatever is needed, from a PR standpoint, I'd be 100% supportive of that, but I would want to see something like this on the ballot, and that's a direct response of the citizens, no matter what the quantity might come in as, but what, you know, the percentage we get back, someone plucking at that item. It would be a response, and I would be comfortable with the response, simply because it was out there. The education of the voter would be high on my list of things to do, where we would explicitly state, you know, what, in essence, what this is all about. And I do know that deer is a problem, is a headache for some citizens because of the destructive nature and also the cause of accidents for the city. So tonight, we are voting to whether or not to go with this, a proposal on the ballot?
I would defer probably to the city attorney, but our view is that if the council is comfortable with moving forward, we think you could probably approve it tonight, assuming that's correct. And then if you did, our next step would be is that our next regular meeting, which is coming up here in a couple of weeks, we would have Mr. Mannion and probably Administrator Zorn at the meeting, and we would really be laying out an action plan for the next several months as to what we're going to do as far as events, PR, things like that, and really get more of a concrete plan for all of that setup so we can start executing it.
Okay.
Yes, that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. So essentially, you did a survey, you didn't get enough, you didn't like the amount of responses you got, so you figured, you thought to put this on the ballot, you'd get more results, essentially. Is that the way I understand it?
Yeah, the hope is to get a broader response. I would hate to make a recommendation to the city council for citywide action based off of less than 300 residents' responses. If that's what we have, then that's what we have, but, you know, for several of us on the commission with, you know, a bit of a science background, that just didn't seem like a very defensible position to be making a recommendation for something that's potentially polarizing like this.
And I'd wonder what the response rate was when we had our master plan, both Parks and Rec, and our citywide master plan. I wonder if, I don't think we had over 1,000 either, but I think it was also pretty low, 300, maybe around the average, maybe even, maybe even be a little higher, I would think. But the question, it's an advisory question, that you would then, if it was approved, or the, not approved, but if the residents said, "We are comfortable having a lethal cull," then you would come back with some type of action plan based on that to us to implement throughout the city.
So my belief is, and I could be mistaken about this, our body doesn't have authority to do anything other than make recommendations to you, the council. So if it was approved, the ballot question received a favorable vote, I do think the council as a body would likely still need to approve taking some action, and then that would kind of trigger the ability of us to work with the administration on the steps that come after that. I don't expect that we would be able to move very far forward without the council voting affirmatively that they want, that you want to take steps. And then the next step would probably be to, you know, figure out what kind of contract we need, get some kind of wildlife plan in place, and there's lots of templates out there we can look at.
Okay, and then the last question I have, I don't know if anyone knows this off the top of their head, the city cannot take a position one way or another when we have ballot language. The question is, from the past, approximately how much money was spent on informational material for ballot questions? Do we know?
That's a two-edged sword question. As far as promoting on the internet, with our last charter amendments, it wasn't any tremendous promotion. We had it in our election newsletter, which was something that would be sent out irregardless to the residents. It was a section devoted to that. We had it on our webpage, and I think there were a few ads that were in the Southfield Sun as well. I do think, because this is the first, and this is just my opinion, the first of the nature in an advisory question, I would think that it's going to be significant, some thousands of dollars for the education piece that's showing that it's non-binding. Because when they see this question on the ballot, most people will assume that the city is in support of this, and it's two separate entities. It's just that you guys are recommending that it go on the ballot, because we've never had this type of thing within the last several years on our ballot. So it will be the birth of a new education in doing this, and off just not having any numbers, that's going to be, I would assume, to be over $10,000 easily.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Madam President, although the clerk clearly points out that this is advisory, we could pull, there were two ballot committees, one for the Road Bond Village, we could pull that data from reports, as well as from the May 10, Hadley override in May of 2010. So we could use those, but again, as the clerk points out, those are ballot questions by law that we had to form committees. This being advisory, we don't have that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
First of all, David, I'd like to say thank you to you and your committee for all this work. I think your presentation was excellent. In the city of Southfield, we've been talking many, many years about deer population, what can we do, et cetera, et cetera. I personally am in favor of this advisory ballot question. At least it will, we will know what do the residents want. I agree with David, 300 people out of a population of 72,000, although that's not how many people are going to vote, but still, this would be a great election to put this question on, even though it's going to be on the back of the ballot and probably the last item, there will be a decline as far as how many people will vote on it, but you're definitely going to get a few thousand at least voting on it. You know, and as far as the educating, we, with a lot of the charter proposals, we had like questionnaires that were at the clerk's office in previous years. As far as educating, also, there's the election newsletter, they had a page could be dedicated to explain this, and that's already budgeted for. and that's already budgeted for, you know, to be produced this year. So I'm in favor of this ballot advisory question. I guess the only, the last question is to our city attorney. Would he work with you to like fine to the language, or is this language appropriate?
So David and the Wildlife Commission, you know, they started, and then he always will send it to me to say, you know, do you have any comments or additions? So yes, to answer your question, yes, we work together, and we just have to work with the clerk's office to get it to the county for approval, but yes, we work together.
So this doesn't have to go to the, not the Attorney General?
It's not a charter amendment.
Okay, so it just goes straight out to the county?
Yes.
And when is the deadline for that, approximately?
I think it's, I don't know the date offhand. We have the date, we have time, we have a little bit of time. It's August, yeah.
Okay, okay. So I'm in favor of this question going on the ballot. And I believe this committee has worked very, very hard. And I just want to say thank you for bringing it forward to us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, you know, we have done nothing other than the Wildlife Committee. This has gone on for years. The first time I saw deer in Southfield was over 20 years ago. And, you know, we have, I think we're, and it's not scientific, but we definitely have a split decision here. I just don't know to what degree. I hear from people, "I love the wildlife, I love, they're beautiful animals." And then I have the people that are tearing their hair out over the destruction of their property, the money they have invested in landscaping, and the, some of them tell me, "I've just given up. I'm not doing anything more with curb appeal." And obviously, you know, we spent a lot of time encouraging curb appeal. I've been a long, long been an advocate for this ballot question. We need some real feedback, and then we can decide, based on that feedback, where you want to go from there. We've had at least the administration and the Neighborhood Services Committee, and then the South Oakland mayors, when Southfield hosted, we have the DNR. And the DNR indicated to us that they would allow a bow and arrow hunt in Southfield in January. And we could do this in nature preserves, where you close the park. You could do it on golf courses. And obviously, what really needs to be done is the education effort. Just that article, when David and the commission did their first report, and the Southfield Sun followed up, that article that was in the Sun, I got feedback from that. Some of it was hysterical, quite honestly, that, "Oh, you know, you're anti-animal." It's not about that, it's really, part of the education is, it's not good for the deer, to have 80 deer in a square mile. And as I pointed out to David in Legislative Committee when this was brought forth, that, those estimates, that's the deer that were seen by helicopter. In my neighborhood, it says two. Well, I regularly see three. And, you know, I'm in a neighborhood with not a lot of, you know, right off the freeway. So I really want to see this on the November ballot. I think it's time we did something and did a read of the community. And people don't always respond to surveys, but we know we're going to have a large turnout on November 2. So I urge you to move forward with this tonight.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Just wanted to add, I had a council member just asked me a question. We're projecting approximately about 26,000 people, low end, that's conservative, that will potentially vote in November. So if we do our equations for proposals on the back of the ballot, we're at the very least probably guaranteed 8,000 people would vote for this. So if we're looking at it as far as households, even if one person from the household voted, if we had 8,000 individual people, that's a fair share market of the individuals here. So the other question that I was asked is that, how much would it cost? It's not going to cost anything in addition. The only way it would cost more money is if we, if this moved us to a two-page ballot, not a front and back fight, but a two-page ballot, which that's not going to be the case right now, because if anything, we could have an 11 and 1/2 by 17 or 19 ballot. So that's highly unlikely with that. So at the very least, I would estimate 8,000 people that would probably answer the question on the ballot in November.
You know, I'd also add that, let's say that the majority of people who vote say, "No, we don't want to cull." Then we have an answer for the people that are constantly saying, "When is Southfield going to do something about the deer?" That's why we really, we're kind of stuck, and we need to, we need to do something.
Madam Chair, if I may, one minute. I'm definitely for putting this on the ballot, but I want to make sure we do an aggressive voter education on this. So when we get this back, it'd be a document that we can obviously stand by with respect to X amount of people, this is why we're going. And we can do a budget, once this is, I'm not trying to put the cart before the horse, but once this is rolling, we can sit down with Mannion or whoever, what do we need to do from a dollar standpoint, a budget, to make sure we do the educating the citizens on this particular item? So the dollars can be worked up, you know, whatever, from an education standpoint. And I would, I for one, want to make sure we have an aggressive, moderate, not expensive, but whatever is appropriate for this type of item to be paid for, and the educating the citizens, and something that we can, you know, as an elected official, we can say, "If we did this, and we get this response, and this is why we're doing whatever, you know, is being dictated to control these animals." So that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, counsel.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve the language as submitted. By the Wildlife Commission, oh, sorry.
That the chair asks for the second paragraph of the resolution to be scratched. So that needs to be reflective in the motion that's on the table.
Oh, I was just going baseball, what he read to us. Okay.
So the resolution as amended by the Wildlife Commissioner chair should be what's adopted, because he asked for that in the presentation.
Dan, you do it. No, I'd like to move approval.
Of the amended language.
Of the amended language from the Wildlife Commission as presented this evening. Support.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the adopt, for the approval of the resolution as presented by the Wildlife Commissioner chair, with the amended language for the November, to be added to the ballot on November 8, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Okay. Thank you.
So do we?
Sir, I want to thank you very much for your presentation. It was good, it was informative, and it cut straight to the bone of what we had to deal with tonight. I appreciate it.
Always happy to help.
Excuse me, one second. Just a point of order, please.
Yeah, just to clarify, this covers placing it on the ballot? Or do we still have to have a resolution requesting that this be put on, the ballot question be put on the ballot?
We have the resolution, and the last sentence, it says, "Resolved that the question of whether the city council of the city of Southfield should improve and implement a program to reduce the local deer population using humane lethal means for the purpose of long-term sustainable management of deer, which advisory ballot question statement shall be submitted to the electors." So this resolution that you just adopted and approved will now be the catalyst to move to the next step as far as, obviously, the three of us will be talking, but this resolution approves that action.
Okay.
It's confusing, because it's different than a charter amendment, so it's.
Right, I think, yes, I see where everybody sees the resolution.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, so if we needed to approve something else, we're all set. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, where are you going?
Oh, no, just wanted to thank you all for your time, and sorry to give you a mouthful with the amendment, but wanted to make sure we didn't have anything inaccurate in there, so.
Good information, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any other business tonight? Hearing and saying none, meeting adjourned.